Okay, everyone. I'd like to call the order of the Windsor Workshop, Special Meeting of the City Council, for Monday, January 22nd, 2024, and ask to tell the roll.
Okay. Okay.
I think he's muted.
Oh, okay. You're muted, but I...
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
One. Here. Lencioni.
Here.
Dem.
Here.
Matrilla.
Here.
Werbal.
Here.
Besner.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, a few things before we get started. First of all, I missed, but he's gonna hear it, not tonight, he's gonna hear it at the next City Council meeting, Mark Bulkin's birthday, so my apologies. You're gonna get it again, this is prepared. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mark.
Um, a couple of things before we get started. For those of you who have, I think I'm, maybe not everyone's seen, Mark, you guys have been through, okay, not a workshop. So, um, we've done a few of these, and it's an opportunity for us to talk a little bit more in depth about topics, not necessarily in conjunction with committee meetings, but could potentially, and will, in some instances, like the budget, will go to committee after the limited City Council, and oftentimes, it's a way for us to bring up ideas in the open forum, so that staff can take that back, and then come up with initiatives and/or recommendations for us. So, a few things, um, we want this to be effective, we want people to be engaged, and with that, um, most of you know my personality, and I know many of yours, and the goal is to try to wrap up by seven, because then we become ineffective, and we're not engaged, and then, you know, we're a little bit, our brain becomes less focused. That's the goal. Um, I did send out an email a few weeks ago about the workshop of this style. I know that Mondays are technically easier for everyone, because of the fact that you already have a Monday down, usually where that's in your calendar, or something that happens on a weekly, but there has been some interest in potentially a Saturday meeting. So, um, if we get through everything today, uh, the plan is to not meet next Monday, that was on the calendars, as a whole, if we needed that. I do encourage, and I know that I've talked with many of you about the topics we're gonna talk about today, and I know I've talked with staff about, um, conversations they've had with many of you up here, so continue that engagement if there's something you don't feel like you've had enough information about. Um, we're gonna be spending a lot of time on budget tonight. Many of you have already been spending a lot of time on budget, so I wanna give the council credit for, it's not just tonight, that they're working on budget, and, um, you know, the budget is not being presented tonight, but it's information that will help staff to bring the budget back to you in February, um, and City Administrator and Director Hannah will talk more about that. But as I mentioned, a few weeks ago, I sent out an email about interest to, of the fall workshop being on a Saturday, and so I think I may be heard from two of you about your availability, so, um, not tonight, but feel free to, or tonight later, feel free to email me and send me a response to that, if you could, that yes, you would like to see a Saturday being added, and what Saturdays in September you are available. Um, based on the two responses I've gotten so far, I think only one of those Saturdays may work, so I know Saturdays are tricky, um, I just wanna make sure whatever we plan works for everyone in this group. So, we'll continue this style, and the potential may be that we would add Saturdays. Um, as I mentioned, we have a lot of topics, we have a lot of information to get through. The reason why I also say it would be great to, you know, keep this to a certain, potentially seven or seven thirty for brain fatigue, is also our staff have been spending a ton of time on this information, so, again, not to cut them off, but they've been working really hard, and I wanna give them the credit for that, so putting the extra time in that you have been, thank you. Um, so I think with that, as we kick off budget, I know City Administrator McGuire's gonna start, so I'll hand it over to you, and actually, this is, we'll use the same style we use for committee and City Council, please use your hand, because, um, Ron is unable to be here this evening, so he's on Zoom, so I wanna make sure that we're able to get everyone in and engage in this process. So, sorry, Ron, that you cannot be here, but we know you're there. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just gonna make a couple of opening comments, and I'm gonna turn the bulk of the budget presentation over to Bill, but, um, as the mayor already noted, tonight is intended to be a presentation of high level, that we are looking for City Council direction, so we can actually implement those numbers into our draft budget. The draft budget will be put together based on our operational budgets, as well as our capital items, once we receive that direction tonight, and those draft budgets will be presented to City Council over the coming weeks, based on that feedback, and presented in pieces over committee meetings in the next few months. I do wanna thank everybody who's been engaged in this process so far, we've received a lot of questions at the staff level, and we do appreciate that, it allows us to know what you're looking for, and allows us to better tweak our presentations to meet the information that you seek in making some of these decisions, and giving us that feedback. I do wanna point out that, um, last year, obviously, we've got a relatively new staff here, with a lot of us joining in the last two and a half years, but Bill and I decided that we were going to actually present a draft budget to City Council, and past years, that wasn't done, it was a lot of the high-level discussion, a lot of one-way information, rather than taking that feedback and actually giving the draft budget figures, so last year was actually the first year that City Council has seen a draft budget, at least in the last several. Um, so we will be continuing to tweak that process, so if there's information that you're seeing either tonight, or over the next several committee meetings, where we do present that draft budget, where you feel like you want a little bit more in-depth knowledge, or wanna sit down with any staff members, we are always available to do that. Um, so I'm gonna just start by going over the strategic plan priorities. Every recommendation that we are making here this evening is based on these strategic plan goals, the first being that balanced and thoughtful development, second, community engagement, third, organizational resiliency, and then the fourth is financial wellness. So all of our staffing needs, all of our capital expenditures and recommendations are based on these four priorities, and designed to meet these four priorities in different ways, as we get through the actual slides tonight, hopefully you'll be able to see where those items that we're making recommendations on actually fit into these strategic plan goals, as those are what staff needs to guide our direction and recommendation every year and every presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to Bill.
All right, thank you, Heather. Um, the good news is, uh, other people are gonna be speaking tonight on some of these slides, Pete, Heather, not just myself, that's a very good thing, um, I'm sure you're all very happy about that. Uh, we are scheduled to take a break somewhere halfway through if we need to, so just kind of step away, collect ourselves a little bit, um, and like Heather said, this is meant to be conversational, so if there's questions, as Mayor alluded to, please ask, um, you know, now's the good time to ask these questions, not wait till the end, or some other stopping point, so, um, thank you, we'll, uh, we'll walk through this, and like I said, if there's questions, uh, please, please ask. Um, so financial wellness, so this was the goal established out of the strategic planning process, to implement policies, practices, procedures, that manage long-term liabilities, increase understanding and awareness of the city's fiscal condition, and continue the efficient use of city resources to ensure ongoing financial strength and sustainability. Um, so that is the summary of everything that came out of the strategic planning process. Out of that priority were six different goals that came out of that, uh, planning process, and what we've done here is kind of, in red, give you an update on the status of those goals. So the first one was to identify ongoing annual revenues to fund the city's core capital project programs. Um, essentially, we completed that with the passing of the increase in the home real sales tax, generating 4.4 million in new revenues annually. Um, it is something that we're gonna monitor going forward, but essentially, we, uh, essentially completed that, um, over the year ago with that action. Implementing what utility rates that provide resources to fund improvements to the city's utility systems, uh, that is something that is ongoing. Last year, we had an increase of six percent applied to the water and sewer rings, and there was no change in electric rates. Uh, we haven't had an electric rate increase in about five or six years, I believe, so, um, it's been a while since we've had to touch those rates. Uh, number three is something that is ongoing. Number four, increasing fiscal and budget transparency, as Heather alluded to, we did create a draft budget last year, uh, we are building on that, making more improvements to it, especially in the area of providing a lot of narrative and explanation of the city's capital projects for next year, um, and the future, so that we all have the same information, and can reference it going forward. Uh, maintaining appropriate general fund reserve balance in relation to the city's overall financial position, uh, so this is gonna be a conversation tonight, where we think we have the opportunity to use a small portion of the reserve, uh, to fund capital projects and pension liabilities, while maintaining our, uh, strong fiscal position, um, as a whole. And the last was, uh, implementation of a new debt management policy, which was completed in '22. Uh, so brief overview of the current economic environment, um, inflation has been, you know, an issue the last couple of years, uh, it went from 1.4% to 7%, and 6.5% the last two calendar years, but has moderated since then to 3.3% for calendar 2023, and it's actually been basically zero since, uh, over the last four-month period, so there's been some positive movement on inflation, and that can help, um, the city in dealing with some of the cost increases that, that we've seen. Um, still, I'm still not sure where inflation's gonna head, um, generally, but, um, that's been some positive, uh, movement there. Uh, the federal funds rate is still 5.25%, we anticipate that's gonna go down over the next, um, probably two or three increased rate decreases this year by the Federal Reserve, based on inflation moderating, and, uh, lack of a need to have a restrictive economy to make sure inflation doesn't come back. Uh, that's good for people taking loans for different things like autos, uh, but can be, um, resulted in a decrease in investment income that the city can realize. Uh, so there remains some economic uncertainty going forward, but we're kinda taking a soft landing approach at this point. Revenues continue to increase, but at a slower pace than previous years. Uh, we're still seeing the cost of, of services that the city provides increase, as well as in capital projects, so we're still seeing that, um, that effect, um, during, during our budget. Uh, competitive labor market still exists, with employee retention and recruiting is still a challenge, uh, the King County unemployment rate was 4.3% at the most recent indicator. Uh, so this is a, this is a snapshot of the city's current fiscal year general fund budget. Um, one of the things, um, we wanted to do is just kind of point out that sales tax comprises the largest portion of the city's general fund revenues, um, after that is property tax revenues, about 25%, and intergovernmental revenue, which is essentially, uh, state's shared income tax revenue comprising about 12%. Um, and this kind of gives a breakdown of the different departments, as you can see, roughly 51% of the city's current general fund budget is dedicated for public safety, police and fire purposes, public works around 19%, and then admin, IT, HR, finance comprising around, uh, 13% of the annual budget. Uh, I just wanna go over a couple of revenue trends really quick. Uh, as far as sales tax revenue, this is the, sales tax is broken up between the municipal 1% and the city's home real sales tax, so the municipal 1%, the budget for that's currently about 16.5 million, and this is about 29% of the city's total general fund budget. Um, so this sales tax is applicable to everything, all transactions in the city, there's no exclusions. Uh, and the numbers you're looking at here include the city's 3% cannabis tax, uh, so those revenue numbers are rolled into the numbers that you see right here. Um, overall, we've seen revenues increase about 6% to 10% more than the same period last year, um, so we're continuing that good-paced revenues increasing year over year. Uh, these numbers are gross before any rebate agreements, uh, related to sales tax or other incentive agreements. Uh, we do have a little bit of a bump here, in January '24, we were notified, um, by the Illinois Department of Revenue that there was a one-time correction made to the city's sales tax revenue for both the municipal 1% and the city's home rule 1%, um, can't really get into specifics of that, other than they went through several levels of auto review, uh, but that correction to the city resulted in about a million dollars of additional sales tax being credited to the city for January, so that's why we had that little bump, uh, that you'll see in the upcoming December reports.
Yeah. How did, how did we, did we, were we just contacted by the state about that, or did you look into that?
Um, so we saw the distribution be about 60% more than the prior year, so we contacted the state immediately, knew something was up, and it took a few days of phone calls and paperwork, but they were able to give us, uh, the basics of what it was, and it went through several levels of reveal on their end, to be able to make sure it wasn't an error, it's something we're gonna have to get back, um, so that's essentially the process that we went through.
Good catch.
We didn't know, it just happened to us.
It just happened, I mean, this was early last week that it actually happened, so.
Wow.
It's better than a correction happening literally, so that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, nice catch.
So, any other questions on it? Uh, so the city has a 1% home real sales tax that's dedicated to the general fund, the budget for that's roughly 8.9 million, or 15% of general fund revenues. Um, this tax does not apply to title vehicles, sales of food or drugs, so that's why the revenue is less, even though it's the same percentage. Um, revenues have been generally between minus 2% and 4% change over the last year, um, so I think part of that is you're seeing price increases, inflation starting to go down, it's making its way to retail prices, um, so it's kind of a mixed bag for the most part, but generally, revenues are tracking similar to last year. Um, as you can see, that correction also happens, uh, with these numbers here in January as well. Uh, so overall, sales tax is more than, more than last year, but we are seeing less of an increase that we have in prior years. Uh, so we segregated the city's capital fund, half percent home real sales tax, this was the increase that was approved effective July 1st, uh, this is dedicated for roads, capital infrastructure, and the capital projects fund, um, our original estimate of about 4.4 million that this tax would generate seems to be, uh, pretty consistent so far with what we're seeing, um, so we'll refine that estimate to next, to, for next year, but, um, so far, the revenues are coming in as we expected. So these are some rough, uh, estimates at this point in time about total sales tax revenue for the current fiscal year and for next fiscal year. Um, as you can see, we're estimating right now about a 9.8% increase in sales tax revenue for the municipal 1% and 4% for the home rule side. Um, those numbers will be closer to 6.3 and minus .4, were it not for this one-time adjustment that we just talked about from the state. So we're still seeing increases basically year over year, but they're a lot less than we, um, saw in these prior years of 2021 and '22. Uh, we had a lot of unique things going on during those years, especially the leveling of the playing field act, which resulted in a lot of out-of-state retailers giving sales tax directly to the city, instead of paying it directly into the state's use tax fund, and that gets distributed on per capita basis. We're getting that revenue now directly from all of these out-of-state retailers. Um, so some tentative projections for next year as far as sales tax, uh, we're looking about a 2.8, 2.9% increase versus current year projected, um, still more than last year, but less than the increases we've seen in the prior years. Um, and then just a final note, we are anticipating, especially with that one-time adjustment with the Illinois Department of Revenue, uh, revenues to be about 7.6% over budget, and 4.8% over budget, um, for both of those taxes, um, combined. Um, any questions on sales tax, or?
Yes.
Um, would you, do you think it's more based on more transactions, or just because the costs have gone up, so just that the dollars are, are higher?
Um, I think, uh, the cost, uh, inflation has definitely played a part in it, probably the major part in it, um, new businesses as well, I think, you know, you've had, you know, a few, a couple new auto dealers open as well, and several other new businesses, so a combination of inflation, new businesses, um, and increase in retail activities generally.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so this is a breakdown of sales tax revenue by business type, uh, there's a lot of information on, going on here, but we thought it's helpful if some of you hadn't seen this chart before, and this just shows that automotive, you know, dealerships and gas stations are the main source of our sales tax revenue comprising about 43% um, out of the 1% of municipal sales tax. Uh, this is based on business types, so a lot of businesses get jumped, uh, jumped into miscellaneous retail or general merchandise, but it kind of gives you a sense of the different categories of retailers that we have in the community. Uh, one of the things to monitor too is, you know, automotive sales, gas sales, they're really susceptible to the economy, that's something we always monitor, you know, when the economy kind of goes up and down, those things tend to follow those ups and downs as well, so, um, if you have a high amount of one sector of your sales tax revenue, based on one type of business, you wanna kind of monitor that for changes that might happen, especially if an economic downturn. Um, on our state's shared income tax revenue, this is also known as LGDF, Local Government Distributive Fund, this is the corporate and individual income tax revenue that the state collects on its state income taxes, and distributes a portion of it to all municipalities on a per capita basis. That per capita basis for us right now is our official population of 33,081, and this is roughly 9% of our total general fund revenue budget. Um, so for the first nine months of this current fiscal year, revenue's about, about 1% less than last year, but again, that's due to the very large distribution we got at the beginning of the prior year, kind of throwing off those year-over-year numbers. Um, so right now, this is a really difficult revenue source to project, because, uh, corporate income tax payments and individual income tax payments vary significantly, um, you spend a lot of time trying to analyze this, but as of right now, we're probably keeping our current budget of 5.6 million consistent with next fiscal year, in terms of what this budget will be, but it's something we're gonna monitor going forward. Um, and just a bold point at the bottom, we currently receive 6.16 and 6.85% of the individual and corporate income tax returns, that used to be 10%, but when the state raised their income tax rates many, many years ago, they decreased the amount that municipalities get from 10% down to that lower 6% level. Yes?
Do you anticipate this changing again in the future, the weight that we get?
My...
Or is it just unpredictable, or?
This is something that we go down to Springfield every year, and I think that's a big push, and we go down with Metro West, and part of the lobby is saying that we ask for more money, this is a topic that I think is on every municipality's radar, when we met with Governor Prisker, the mayor, and I, same thing came up again, and, and there's always a pushback from the state to give more of it, their argument is the correction they made kept the dollar amounts very similar, but it is continually act, I don't see it going up anything significantly back to the 10% anytime soon, we may see some incremental changes, as you see from that 6.16 to 6.85, half a percent or less, um, will be, I think, the most movement we'll see at any given time.
And then Metro West, do they advocate on municipalities for that type of stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We go down there altogether, in the governor's office and the rest of the representative senators, and sit down all of us, and say the same thing, and we hear the same thing.
We get the same answer, okay.
And this is not just Metro West and the King County municipalities pushing it, this is statewide, every single city, this is on the top of the agenda, especially because of all the unfunded mandates that we get, this was a huge impact to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is a little history of some of the other revenue sources in our general funds, um, we have our alcohol tax revenue of, um, 3%, uh, we've seen some steady increases in that, overall, we anticipate that continuing into next year. Uh, state use tax, we had a little bit of a decrease in that revenue when the state changed the laws to require retailers to pay us directly, uh, but we're starting to even see that revenue creep up again, uh, to about 1.3 million for this current year. Our 6% hotel tax, uh, obviously, that's come, um, up a lot since 2021, uh, not sure what the estimates are gonna look like for the end of the year, that's something that can vary a lot month to month, but, uh, we are looking at revenue at this point being substantially similar to, uh, last fiscal year of around 1.7 million. Our local fuel tax is the two cents, uh, per gallon tax that we have on local gasoline, that funds, uh, street maintenance and other, uh, uh, street repair-type programs, like crack filling, uh, it's based on per gallon, so it's a pretty consistent, um, revenue source year to year. Uh, investment income, uh, like I said, rates have been increasing over the last, you know, two years since 2022, so we've been able to capture some of that additional yield, and get some additional dollars to the city in terms of investment income for the general fund, uh, we anticipate that continuing for the near term, but over the next, uh, two to three years, we anticipate that, uh, going down as interest, as the federal funds rate continues to decrease, and interest rates, um, continue to go down. Uh, and finally, building permits, um, that can vary a lot, uh, based on developments and the timing of when payments are made, but, uh, for the most part, we tend to receive about 400, 500, uh, 600,000 dollars a year for building permits. Yes?
Just, uh, some clarity on the alcohol tax, is that bars, restaurants, and packaged liquor, like something you would buy at Lundin's or something like that?
Correct, that would include all packaged, um, alcohol purchases as well at, um, stores like Costco or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
So wanted to just have a slide quickly on the status of our current incentive agreements, obviously, we talked a lot about sales tax, uh, some of that is remitted, um, per certain, um, incentive agreement, so we just wanted to, uh, give everyone, everyone kind of a status of that. Uh, the first one, Costco, that was a, um, 15-year, um, revenue bond that we are paying off in January of 2025, um, so we will be, be, have to commit those revenues, um, to that sales tax bond after that, so, um, that is a good thing, and something we're, uh, taking into account as we're looking forward over the next couple of years. Uh, I'm not gonna walk through each one of these individually, but, um, you can see Fox Valley Volkswagen, Audi, Honda, Kia, we all have, um, uh, certain terms associated with these agreements. One of the things that we tried to do is put in some estimated years that we think some of these agreements might be satisfied in terms of timing, uh, that can range from 2026 and 2027 to 2035, so, we wanted to include this, just as a reminder that these are things that are out there that we monitor, and kind of looking ahead to see what sort of breathing room we're gonna have, um, in our budget potentially in these out-years, once some of these, um, incentive agreements are paid off, and the city can kind of, um, take on or have enjoyed the fiscal benefit of those agreements being satisfied.
Really quick question, regarding the current agreements, I know Costco's gonna end, as you stated, that'll free probably some of the funding up, but...
Yep.
The six agreements we have in place now, um, is that pretty average for the size of our community, our budget, could we afford to do more, should, you know, are we doing enough? I guess...
Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of things in that question.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to figure out if what we have in place is, is realistic for our budget.
Having come from a community with a lot of auto dealerships, that's pretty typical and appropriate, so...
Sure. And then going back to the utility funds, I just had a quick question, um, you mentioned, and I know this, based on the electric fund, we haven't had raises in that for years, is it because the fund, or, I'm sorry, the utility is operating efficiently, correct, the rates are correct for what we have in place?
Yeah, for the, for the electric funds, uh, we haven't had to increase rates, um, I know the, there were some recommended maintenance increases, but we chose not to, um, recommend those increases.
And then is that what we're gonna do with the other utility funds, just get them operating at the level they should be operating with the correct rates?
It's a much more complex discussion we'll be getting into in a little bit.
Well, I've always been interested in that part of it, but yeah, we could get into it.
I think that's part of our discussion, um, later, as part of this.
I do wanna just make a quick note too, um, that Costco, um, incentive agreement will be expiring, but we will be talking about where that's essentially going to be offset by some of our debt loads, or our debt payments that are gonna be due, increasing by that exact same amount, so...
Okay.
Everything's a little bit of a balancing act, so as far as the number of incentive agreements, I don't know that there's a right or wrong answer to that, but as we get new, especially auto dealers in, or new, or new major commercial businesses, it's found revenue essentially, so by offsetting it with an incentive agreement, it's still additional revenue than we were receiving, so it's always in that positive, so I think it's, it's more appropriate to look at it, is that new revenue to the city, and what can we afford to give back on that percentage versus compared to other municipalities?
Yeah, I'm not against doing any more, I was just kind of curious how that flows it around, though. Thank you.
And it's possible the $915,000 reimbursement, um, you know, related to Whole Foods, might need to be made next fiscal year at some point, so that's essentially some of the offset with the Costco agreement expiring, and one of the things we're trying to balance right now.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, so essentially, we're in the middle of the budget process right now, as Heather alluded to, we're gonna be formulating some year-end projections, um, this, at this month and next month as well, as we come up with a draft budget, um, as we talked about, revenues are slightly higher, um, than what we budgeted for this year, operating expenditures will most likely be under budget due to staff vacancies and various projects or initiatives that, for various reasons, didn't get started, or are partly getting pushed into next fiscal year. Um, so we probably will have a variance, it's, it's gonna vary, um, what that will be, it could be one and a half million, it could be 3 million, part of the challenge is we don't get some of our revenues until three months after the fiscal year ends as far as sales tax revenue, so we're kind of in a little bit of a lag as to far as what those numbers are actually gonna look like, and being able to come up with that amount, what that amount may be. Um, but there are a couple of budget adjustments that we're on the discussion for tonight, one is something we've done over the last couple of years, sometimes twice in one year, setting aside additional money for capital projects, uh, that could include a portion of our current fund balance, as well as any variances that we have, um, realized in general fund for this year. we have realized in general fund for this year. The city's done a great job the last two years trying to catch up on various capital projects, so we want to keep that going. We have a lot of capital projects scheduled for next year and the following years as well, so a transfer somewhere in the neighborhood of two million to three, four million may be appropriate to do for that. So we're going to work through the numbers as we keep in this process and try and come up with that, what that number should be. The second item is the next section of our discussion, making an additional city contribution in our current fiscal year to help fund our police and fire pension liabilities. So before we get to that, is there any other questions on anything that we've talked about at this point? Everyone have to cover?
First, my memory, sorry. You said it's hard to understand the variances because we're three months in our years after January first or after the fiscal year end. Sorry, I missed that.
There's always a three-month lag for sales tax revenue and some other revenues from the state, so a sales tax transaction in December, we don't get that money until March.
Oh, sure.
And so since we accrue back that money as to when the retail transaction actually occurred, you know, we're accruing and reversing those entries to figure out what our fiscal results for the year will actually be.
Okay. So on May first, obviously, when our new year begins, sorry, then we're still, we're talking like February or March or whatever, first, January, February, March?
March.
March.
I'm sorry.
Three, three months.
Three months, right.
Yeah.
That's why a lot of the trend charts, we show on a cash basis, so you can see when they're coming in, but really, the first three months of those revenues were already accrued back to the prior fiscal year. Does that make sense?
Any other questions for Director Hanif, Director Hanif, before we move on to pensions?
From the, but the variance you said is due to majority sale tax or are there's other things?
It's going to be a combination of things, and we haven't been able to finalize even what those things are. We're still in the process of working on coming up with projections for the current fiscal year. So we're in the early stages of doing that at this point.
Up to, because I mean, that, quick math, that up to a ten percent variant? Am I thinking about that right?
If you look at a combination of revenues being slightly over budget and then expenditures being under budget, be a combination of the two.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, one more. And then, last year, we were about three million, correct? So that was our.
Yeah, we did an initial transfer. We funded for a transfer from general to capital and then there's supplementary one at the end of the fiscal year after it ended of about, I think it was around one point seven or two million dollars. So, and this is all part two, making sure we have the money set aside for capital so that we don't have to go out and bond for some of these capital projects has been the case in the past.
Bill, one question. What is our current reserve fund balance?
The, our last reserve, general fund, unassigned fund balance metric was forty-six point one percent. So if we look at taking a combination of current year variances and a small portion of fund balance, I imagine that number will go down next fiscal year, but it's hard to say at this point. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
So next section is we want to talk a little bit about police and fire pension fund contribution options. As we kind of begin this discussion, we thought it'd be helpful to kind of take a step back and explain a little bit background as far as the three primary pension systems that the city maintains. So there are three defined benefit pension plans in the city of St. Charles. The Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, Police Pension and Fire Pension Funds. All current police and fire personnel are members of the Police and Fire Pension Funds. Everybody else is a member of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, all full-time employees and certain eligible part-time employees. Pension plan benefits are defined by state statute as well as employee contributions. So those current contribution levels are listed there. IMRFS is four and a half percent, police nine point nine one, and fire nine point four five five. Again, those are the employee contributions into the pension systems that are defined by state statute. The city pays into the IMRFS pension fund based on a percentage of wages. So once a month, the city makes a payment to IMRFS based on the actual pensionable wages that were earned by employees for that month. IMRFS, a couple of years ago, was over one hundred percent funded, and I think the last time we had the information from them that they were ninety-two percent funded. So it's a well-funded system, but it's structured a little bit differently in terms of how the city makes its contributions to IMRFS. Police and fire are based on an actuarial evaluation, so that actuarial evaluation is done after the end of the fiscal year. This most recent one, as of April third, twenty-twenty-three, that forms the basis for the actuarial determined contributions being calculated by the actuary, which make their way into the upcoming tax levy in December. So like I said, the benefits for police and fire pension and IMRFS governed by state statute, those benefits were modified and decreased for newly participating employees in all three systems that started in those systems for the first time after January first, twenty-eleven. So those employees are called tier two, and everyone else prior to that is commonly known as tier one employees. Again, those were changes made by the state, set into law and everything that we can't change.
Bill, just for clarification, so the, obviously, I understand the employee contributions, the employer contribution, are those all for all of these groups or are those all set at the state as well?
I'm sorry, the employer contribution?
The employer contribution, yes. Are those all set as well?
So the employer contribution for IMRFS, we get a notice annually saying what that needs to be.
Okay.
And we apply that percentage to the wages for the upcoming calendar year.
Okay.
From the police and fire side, we have an actuarial valuation calculated that determines what that amount is, and we incorporate that into the upcoming tax levy.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's something I'm not speaking one hundred percent accurate about, I hope Jen will correct me if she is actually the expert. Yeah. So the last point I wanted to make is there was consolidation of local police and fire pension fund investments already a couple of years ago. Basically, the investments are managed by the local police and fire pension boards for seven hundred and fifty cities and villages throughout the state. The law was changed to consolidate those into new statewide entities separately for both police and fire. So that consolidation has been occurring over the last couple of years and was completed for the city's police and fire pension funds in twenty-two and twenty-three. And actually, over the weekend, the Supreme Court ruled that the consolidation changes that they made were constitutional, as where there were some challenges to that consolidation. Any questions on that? So state statute says that we have a deadline currently of twenty forty to fund the unfunded liabilities at ninety percent. The city, however, follows a one hundred percent funding methodology, which is the sounder methodology to base those actuarial contributions on and actually follows sound accounting practices as well. So I'm not going to run through a lot of the numbers on the side, but just trying to point out a couple of things. The total pension liability, that's what the total liability was as of the end of the last fiscal year. The value of the assets there, that's the actuarial value of assets, and that includes a smoothing of market value adjustments over the last five years. The funded percentage from an actuarial value of asset standpoint was fifty-two percent and sixty-nine percent for police and fire, and that leaves an unfunded accrued liability of forty-four million and twenty-three million. We had an increase in the required contributions for both systems from four point one to four point seven million and then two point seven to just under three million on the fire side. We listed some information about the participants of the fund, just to give you a little, you know, information on the number of participants as well as the investment return assumption that we include when we do the actuarial evaluations and the remaining years to fund that unfunded liability. So it's a lot of information, but any questions on that so far?
Yes, Brian.
What happens if we don't meet the twenty forty deadline?
There could be procedures in place where the state would withhold some of your state shared revenues if you didn't potentially meet those liabilities, but there's a long time between now and then. I imagine some of those things might change, but, you know, that's, that's one of the possibilities.
Any, I mean, I personally haven't detected any, but any with your communication with IML, state reps and what have you, is there any chatter of maybe amendments?
As far as that twenty forty deadline?
Well, that or just amending the.
You know, I think it always comes up in conversations. I don't think anybody is that concerned about it yet, only because there's still a lot of time left on it, but I will say there are a lot of municipalities that are in far worse shape in their funding percentages than we are, so I think as we start to inch closer to that deadline, you'll start hearing more amendments proposed, caveats to that, those kind of things. But, but at this point, we're still, you know, sixteen years out from that deadline, so.
Because I know the one, one was shot down as being unconstitutional, the change to the pension system in the state, not just that, you know, the penalty if we don't meet it, but also just literally the payment system of the state. I don't know. I just didn't know if you heard anything or there was talk of that, but.
Nothing that's come across my way, at least not seriously yet.
Bill, as you're looking at this, are you fairly confident we can get there percentage-wise? Are you kind of happy with the route we're getting toward that? I know, like you said, it's a long ways away, but is like the general plan in place or what the consistent thought was, is it getting in the right direction that you'd like to see at the end?
I think that's partly what we're talking about tonight a little bit. I think if you do the right things and stay on top of it, you stick to your hundred percent funding strategy, even if the state might kick back the date, you may be one of the options to hold that date. A lot of communities have a twenty thirty-three self-imposed deadline to try and meet these liability requirements, because the sooner they can structure their contributions to get to that point, the better. So, so yeah, I'm confident that we can make it if we, if we stick to the right strategy.
One of the curious aspects that we, that we see is the percentage of general fund and the cost of funding pensions, but with that, that we've, that we've increased each year. But one of the things with the changes in investment and return horizons and things like that?
Yeah.
I'm kind of curious, I've never seen anything like that with the percentage of funding. Where are we compared to where we've been in the past? I mean, like over the last three years, what's our trend been for police and fire percentage funded?
If we look at the actuarial value of assets, funded percentage, it's been pretty consistent because they smoothed the investment gains and losses over a five-year period versus the market value, and you get those wild swings of several percentage points up and down. So I think it's been ticking up. I think we had a couple of years, we had a negative return, I think twenty-one or twenty, and you saw some fluctuations there, but it's designed to be more of a consistent percentage.
Right, and I know that we had, we had some good years and bad years, but I mean, just as a whole, because I'm just trying to get like, are we, my, my, my understanding, and I think I heard this, is we've been, you know, working towards that already, and so that's why I was asking, like, is a good, you know, metric to see what kind of progress we're making, and that's why I was like, have we been, you know, at fifty-two and like seventy pretty much for a few years, or will we learn?
I can pull out the numbers and look. I think we've made some incremental progress. Like you said, we might have had a.
It's been smaller percentages, which is why we're going to be having a discussion here this evening about a way to tackle that a little bit more significantly each year based on some of our.
If we're going to get into that, we can revisit that when we start talking more into it.
Yeah, so I think we made some small progress, but I think we have good assumptions. Six point seven five percent is slightly conservative on the investment side, so it all comes down to some of your assumptions. So if you're on an actuarial basis beating that investment assumption over time, then that's going to help you on the, on the funded percentage side.
I will say it's been smaller than I think both Bill and I would like to see that increasing, which is why we're going to have a discussion here about making some different strategies to try to fund that a little bit higher of a percentage to get to that, that threshold sooner.
So one of the things we want to talk about is if we make additional contributions to the pension funds, how does that help reduce our future contribution requirements? So if we are going to be having a conversation about making additional contributions, is there some sort of methodology we have to follow? And the answer really is no, but we kind of came up with a couple of different ways of looking at it. It could be based on the city's current contribution to the each pension system. It could be based on the current unfunded liability. We came up with those as possible metrics to consider, just to have something to work off of, but there really is nothing, nothing requirement. That seemed to be an equitable and fair way to at least have a conversation. So one of the reasons we're talking about doing this is this would actually structurally improve the funded status of the pension systems, and this has the effect of reducing the city contributions required in future years by making a structural additional contribution to the pension system. I had a conversation with our consultant, and every million dollars that you would potentially put into a system would reduce your future contributions over the remaining sixteen, seventeen years by seventy to eighty thousand dollars. So that's what we call structural change, structural improvement to the fund, to the way those systems are funded, and that's one of the things Heather and I have talked about, you know, for a couple of years since, since both of us started. And this is something we can evaluate annually. It's not a commitment to do something year over year. It can just be a one-time shot. It could be something we revisit annually if it's possible. It is favorably, favorably looked at by rating agencies as well when you contribute additional money beyond what you're actuarially required to do. So if we were to look at something in this current fiscal year, you know, this is kind of a layout of some possibilities of what that looks like. You could look at it in terms of the current contribution and increasing that by fifteen, twenty, or twenty-five percent. You could also look at it in terms of what's our current unfunded liability, if we wanted to put additional resources on a percentage basis of two percent, three percent, or four Heather and I have had some initial conversations. At this point, I think we're comfortable doing something that would be in the neighborhood of a twenty percent required contribution increase or two percent of the UAL, something in the neighborhood of one point three million in total, just because we have a lot of capital projects that we still need to hedge fund in, and we need to have some of those discussions internally to make sure that we're able to accomplish some of that. But if this is something that we were to consider moving forward, it's possible that number could increase a little bit as we continue having these discussions. So we think this is something that's worth having a conversation about, and we're kind of looking for a little feedback and input.
Quickly, before we move on to that part, can you just reiterate what specific points you're looking for feedback?
Sure.
And directed on that way. What I'll do at that point then is I want to make sure Ron, because he's on Zoom, has the ability to comment if he's like. No pressure, but I'll start from the right and we'll go down to the left to see if anyone has any comments or questions.
Okay. I think we would like to get some consensus on moving forward with this in concept in the current fiscal year. Right now, looking at the amount of about a twenty percent increase in the contribution currently or two percent of the UAL in the ballpark of around one point three to one point four million, with the potential to move higher.
Thank you. Steve, did you have a question before I move on with that?
No, I, yeah, I do have a question.
Sure.
But now's the time to talk about it, yeah? You're talking about this? What do you want to move on?
Yeah, I'm going to start with Ron. If you have a comment.
That's fine. No, no, I'll wait.
Just move around the room.
Go ahead.
Because I feel like every.
Yes.
Majority may have comments. Ron, do you have any questions or comments at this juncture?
You're on mute.
Is that muted, Joe?
Well, we have to do something about this, so I'd be, I'd go with the fifteen or twenty percent for this year and reevaluate like last year, I mean, like we did last year. So I think we need to move forward or else it's going to catch us, catch us in the end. And as you said, it affects our credit rating, too. I'd be in favor of doing the fifteen or twenty percent.
Thank you. I'm starting, starting from the right. No pressure, but I'll go down the line.
No, I, I just appreciate your insight in putting this together and definitely think it's a good start.
Brian, any?
Refresh, so where, if we increase that by fifteen, twenty percent, that's coming from where?
It would come from either the current year general fund variances or if we didn't have the variances based on our allocation of money to, for capital purposes as well. It may come from a portion of fund balance reserve. So we're looking to either way, however, whatever pot you look at it coming from, it would be a current year additional expense around one point three million.
So short answer is yes, I'm, I'm in favor, supportive of, of paying ahead. I'm more interested in learning where it's coming from and the sustainability of, of that.
And I think that's why we are proposing that we reevaluate this every single year based on some of our surplus at the end of the year, so if we have funds in any given year, then we can tackle that and allot that towards the pension fund. And if for some year we have some major capital expenditures that we weren't anticipating, some major infrastructure issues, then we can pull back from that. That's why we're proposing, rather than making it a standing policy, we evaluate this every year based on our fund balances.
So not to go down this, because I know it'll be time, but that, that's exactly what I'm, I'm more interested in getting into, is I don't want to have this kind of one-off, well, if we can do this, then we'll try and capture A, because we're going to go blind with that approach. So we're going to need a larger systematic strategy for some of these things. I know pensions are a hot topic. these things. I know pensions are a hot topic, but, you know, infrastructure and everything. So short answer is yes, I'm supportive, but I'm much more interested in how and where we're paying for these things down the line.
That's exactly my comment, too. You know, I'm more concerned as to whether this is coming out of the general fund or if it's coming out of the reserves. But I am supportive of it.
Yeah, I agree with that. First of all, I will say, because this is dealing with a long-term position, I'm actually pretty supportive of using reserves to, you know, to help us with it. I do not want to pass, you know, it was a lot of hard for him to pass along, the pension increases to the residents, you know, this year. And I think that we did a pretty good job, you know, holding the line on a lot of things. But considering this is a long-term position, I don't have a problem using reserves. That being said, you know, talking longer-term strategy, you know, I've taken a look at some other cities, you know, positions and taken a look at what's happening with their general funds as well. Because if the entire world is in this situation, you know, it's pretty hard to fight what's happening in the entire world, because it doesn't, you don't have to be great at finance to take a look and take a look at these rising costs and know at some point, at some point this doesn't work. You know, I mean, if you take a look at the amount of our general fund balances that was used to pay for, you know, pension liability, even walking it back twelve years ago, you know, it's significantly different. And we're dealing with these, you know, rising costs. But, you know, I'm trying to understand, and so I can forecast the right way to make good decisions, on what's the rest of, you know, the municipal world, you know, doing to deal with this? You know, what did we use to spend our money on that we're now kicking into these pensions? Because at some point, it just feels very unsustainable. But yes, I absolutely do support, you know, using reserve funds to support making these additional contributions to help get us down the way. But I need help thinking about, you know, what does this mean for all cities? For, you know, how are we going to be thinking about this going forward? Because dealing with it as we see, you know, it raising, you know, and looking like it's heading into an unsustainable place, what are we going to do long-term? And what do other people, what are they doing? Because it's, like I said, it keeps me up at night.
No, I fully support it and all the work that's gone behind it. And much to Ryan and Jamie's point, is just keeping track of how we do that. And maybe going back every year is not the best solution if we know that we could say twenty percent is our guideline every year. And if we have to scale it back due to, you know, using the fund balance or some other source of revenue or capital projects somehow creep up on us and we're not able to do that. But if we make that kind of policy, we will look at the additional contribution of twenty percent. I'm thinking that down the road, we'll get to our required percentage quicker than 2040, which in the long run may save us some definitely some capital that we don't have to spend later. So I fully support looking at a provision to keep that going and make that additional contribution on a yearly basis.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, I mean, at first blush, I mean, I appreciate your, kind of thinking outside the box, coming up with a solution, if you will. Certainly, as colleagues have said, you know, we need to be cognizant and be prudent in determining where that comes from. I think if we just are optimistic, we're, maybe not always, but, you know, we'll generally have a surplus of its hope every year that we can deal with. But is this something, I'm more pleased with the, if I understand this correctly, that this would take pressure off the levy for using pension, for utilizing any levy increase as a, and sort of supporting that, because obviously, as my voting record indicates, I'm not a big fan of that, that I don't want to necessarily, I would think, be posed with increasing the levy to pay pensions. So I appreciate that, our pension contributions. Now, is this something that, should, do we put this in a policy? Or is that too much, too strict?
I was going to say, for this year, if everybody is in support of doing this one-time increase, and we can formulate a policy for years going forward based on, you know, maybe an actuarial recommendation that if we funded X dollars each year, that'll get us to that hundred percent in advance of the 2040 guideline, and maybe that's a better way to approach it. So for this year, one time, and then a policy moving forward each fiscal year after that.
I mean, I think that would be, that seems like a good idea. So I would appreciate, I would support that as well, so.
Yeah, we have a lot of revenue policies and different things about how we deal with one-time revenues. They should go towards capital projects and different things. But we can certainly incorporate consideration of additional pension contributions into that policy. That policy already exists in the budget, so we've kind of worked with that.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, I fully support what you want to do here. I know you do need flexibility. There's unknowns with infrastructure, so one-time deal with this right now sounds good to me. And maybe a policy that gives you flexibility based on whatever surplus we have at the end of the year. And I like the idea that it may mitigate the need for a property tax levy increase. So I fully support what you're asking for.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. I fully support this as well. I know what Heather was just stating, that this isn't going to be the guideline moving forward in regards to tapping our reserves, because I'm in favor of keeping those pretty healthy as they have been for a long time now. But on the other hand, is twenty percent going to be the red line, even though we're just talking about it this time around, meaning do you expect it to be up two or three percent, down two or three percent? Are we talking five or more percent one way or the other?
So for this year, I think we're going to go in with this sort of one point three number. If it turns out after we talk about things, we can increase that a little bit, that would ultimately come forward via budget revision recommendation, so that it's formalized at the committee and council level, what's being done for this current year.
So we'll probably be floating around that number a little bit?
Yeah.
For at least the short term?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay. Bill, I have a couple of thoughts on this. The increase that we did, the half percent increase that we did to the home rule, obviously, we originally earmarked all that towards a lot of, you know, road construction, stuff like that. I would like to see, just to help have stable revenue, a certain percentage, or have dialogue about a certain percentage of that going towards police and fire pension, because that's money that we don't even really have yet technically. But so like, using that as a source to go towards that. But then also, whether it's fifteen percent, twenty percent, twenty-five percent, I mean, big picture, the numbers aren't that big of a difference. Obviously, you said we have forty-six percent balance and reserves. Was that like twenty-seven million?
Correct.
I mean, if we could find a number, say, two million dollars, twenty-seven million, two million dollars, I think we should show, we should make definitely a strong, good faith contribution to get it going, but then also show that we're being proactive. It's not always about increasing the levy to the residents. So I just kind of want to have maybe a couple of different approaches on that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you everyone for your comments on this topic.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on.
Moving on. We talked a little bit about this. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. But the city does maintain an AA1 bond rating. This is the second highest bond rating that you can get from Moody's. Last year, we talked about a lot of changes they were making. But essentially, at the end of the day, the biggest change they made is taking a more comprehensible look at all of the city's finances, not just the general fund and debt service fund. So your enterprise funds, utility funds, they take the financial status of those into consideration more than they used to in looking at the city's bond rating. So these are some of the qualitative factors they look at. I've got a lot of information in my office. Everyone to talk about some of these things in terms of leverage, financial performance economy. These are all things that Moody's looks at on a regular basis in terms of evaluating our bond rating. Really quickly on fund balance, I know we've kind of covered this a little bit. We do have this twenty-five percent minimum policy that we've had for a long time, and we were at forty-six point one percent at the end of the last year. We've talked about using these reserves for certain purposes, so that number might go down. I think we've looked at other communities as well, just so just as anecdotal information, you know, some of these community fund balance metrics are higher than ours, sometimes sixty percent, seventy percent, eighty percent. So, you know, that's happening in other communities as well. It's not necessarily a bad thing. It gives us flexibility to deal with certain liabilities and other issues that we have. So a lot of times, it's a balancing act. That's why I have that little graphic there in terms of balancing our good fiscal position, including fund balance with our debt and liabilities and our capital needs. This was just a summary in case there were any questions on TIF. We've closed, terminated some of our TIF districts over the last few years. We're anticipating getting increment from TIF eight this upcoming calendar year for the first time over at Pheasant Run. And we've made our final payments in the last two years on the St. Charles Mall TIF, number three, and the St. Charles Manufacturing TIF. So not going to spend a lot of time on this, but just wanted to put it out there in case there are any questions on TIF.
Yes, Brian.
Can you speak to TIF four and where we're at with that? Is that up for an extension?
So there's been conversations about that, and those are ongoing. Heather can kind of address some of that as well. But as far as the current financial status, obviously, there's some obligations out there associated with that TIF. TIF four and TIF seven kind of work in tandem and trying to address those. But some of those conversations are ongoing to four. Paul, you had a question?
I have a same question.
Okay. Anything else on TIF? I want to try and catch up a little bit, so. And so now we're going to take a pause and talk a little bit about personnel and staffing. And Jen's going to walk us through some of those points. So thank you.
Good evening. Okay. So I wanted to talk about the compensation adjustments that are worked into the budget for May one. So I'm like right in between needing these and not needing these. All right. So we have a compensation policy that was adopted, that was born out of the study we did a few years ago with GovHR. And some of that incorporated some longstanding existing policy. But that policy provides me the guidance to make a recommendation to Heather and Bill on what to do for the non-union market adjustment. So think of that as like your cost of living adjustment, the thing that's applied to all the employees' wages as well as the ranges. And this is for non-union, non-union positions. And then it also tells me, what data do I use? And how do I come up with what should be budgeted for the merit pool dollars? So merit pool is based on performance, right? You can get zero, you know, because you're a poor performer, or up to five percent. So what we do for this, the purpose of the market adjustment is to align pay so we can maintain internal equity as well as external comparability. So are we maintaining our competitive advantage for talent with our comparable communities? In both those, the internal and the external, we do this by looking at like positions. Okay? So what are the internal, what positions are similar within the city, and then what positions are similar externally to other communities? And so for the market adjustment or the cost of living adjustment, what I do is I reach out to our comparable communities. We have eighteen of them. And those were established by our compensation study that was done several years ago by Sickich. Some of you were here, some of you weren't. And so I reach out to them, what is their cost of living? What is their market adjustment? And then we look at what a market adjustment lands at the seventy-fifth percentile. And that drives what we would be putting in the budget for our market adjustment or our cost of living adjustment. And that's not the only metric. We also factor in, what is the CPI, looking at the Chicago Naperville Elgin area. I also look at Bloomberg DNA's first-year negotiated wage increases for state and local governments. So if state and local governments are having a contract for the first time, that first year, first contract, what is the increase that they're giving out? That drives the market adjustment recommendation. And then for the merit pool dollars, that's a little trickier, right? Because that's a little bit more subjective. But our policy says that I need to look at at least three, at least three different surveys. So I look at the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics Employment Cost Index. That's just really kind of what are employers paying in compensation? How is their compensation going up? That's what that statistic is. And then we're also a member of the Economic Research Institute. That's another kind of organization that collects compensation data. So we look at what are their surveys saying that employers are increasing for merit, their costs. And then I try and get some things from Mercer's Compensation Planning or World at Work Compensation or HR Source. So those are the statistics that kind of drive the merit pool. So that's what we have based on that data. Three point two five is what we're recommending for the market adjustment, or if you think about a cost of living, that'll be applied to the pay ranges as well as to employee, non-union employees' pay. And then the merit pool we're recommending and including in this upcoming budget is three percent. Now, those are born out of kind of the discussion that Heather and Bill and I had, looking at not only what is the data telling us, because the data is telling us something a little bit higher than those, but also what is the affordability and what is the palatability, not just for taxpayers, but also for employees. So we actually ticked those down a little bit for what we're putting into the budget. Personnel expenditures, you know, we're no different than most employers, right? The most expensive component is going to be personnel services, right? Usually seventy-five, eighty percent of a budget. And that's private or public sector, we're no different than that, than those. So when you think of those personnel services, what are the costs that are included in there? Of course, wages, but also payroll taxes, pensions, what you were just talking about, insurance. And obviously, the one you think of first is health insurance, but also life insurance, dental insurance, workers' comp insurance, and then the training and certifications that our employees have to attain. Those are all included in that bucket. And this is not going, an increasing cost, right? This is the thing that we all have to deal with, and it's difficult to manage. Part of that is service level demand that we have. Part of it is, right now, a tight labor market. That is really impacting that. But we also have federal and state statutes. Heather mentioned unfunded mandates. There's a lot that fall and impact the personnel services piece of it. And then we're also looking at what are the collective bargaining agreements, and how do those collective bargaining agreements may constrain how you can manage some of these costs, too. And then I wanted to just go over briefly, what are, what are we looking at at staffing? So this current fiscal year, staffing changes resulted in about a net increase of point five full-time equivalent or FTE. So some positions were vacated or eliminated or reduced, others were upgraded or added. And that resulted in a net change of about like half an employee, think of that. For this upcoming fiscal year, we're looking at potentially net increase of between five and seven full-time equivalents. And that's again, to address some service demands, and as well as to look at what is required under the goals and objectives for the strategic plan. And so one of the things that, this area that this will impact is kind of covers a few different fronts, water, electric, and the general fund. And so we're looking at some staffing changes that have been brought forward by the department directors to meet some of these service demands that we're experiencing right now. That's all I have. Any questions?
Brian?
Can you go back one slide?
Yes.
So the FTE number is about the same as it was in 2012. What's the difference in the cost or expense from 2012? So the same headcount, but how much more expensive is it?
That I'd have to give to you. I don't know the difference.
To add five to seven full-time employees, I'd be interested to know what that looks like in dollar amounts total, everything in compensation, insurance, pension, you know, our contribution, everything. I'm just, I'd be curious to know what that number looks like.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep, that's fine.
And Jen, when you say that the addition of staffers to address service demands and meeting strategic plans, is that when you can give more detail on as to what those are and why?
Sure. And individual department directors may want to address that as well. So one of the changes that we made this current year, so we had an unexpected exit, early retirement in our code enforcement. It's an opportunity to really address code enforcement, especially some of the things that have been coming from residents through all of you in terms of expectations of enhancing code enforcement. So we took the time to create a senior, or senior, code enforcement manager. And so that was an add. And that is something that we'll continue to look at, and you'll see more of that person bringing forward ideas. We also had a marketing digital communication specialist. That was a part-time position, again, an unexpected exit. She had an excellent opportunity. We're looking at making that full-time, still within this fiscal year, to address the goals of the strategic plan under community engagement. We had some changes in the city administrator's office. So we're looking at how do we better meet the needs of that department because meet the needs of that department? Because that model of a full-time admin and a part-time admin goes back a long, long time. And so what, some of the things that we need to get done, we need to change what that staffing looks like as well. We converted a police officer position, a vacant police officer position to a sergeant position in investigations. That was a position that was part of the city many years ago. I think maybe through the recession, it was less vacated, but it was really, we needed a sergeant position to address those needs in that, in that division in the police department. We had done an engineering study to look at development and how we process development and permits. And correct me if, if I'm misspeaking, I'm speaking more in general terms here, but it identified several positions that, that we needed, needed to add. And so through making some positions, not filling some positions, we created a construction, construction manager. We created an assistant community development director. I think those are, those are the two I'm thinking, thinking of. So those are things to address some of the goals that came out of the strategic plan related to thoughtful development.
And one of the other things I'll point out, and I know we've had this conversation with several council members, is that every single time we have a vacancy at the city, that goes through a justification for hire process.
Right.
So that starts with the department director, and sometimes even below the department director, to look at that position, to determine, is this something that we need to refill as is? Or do we need to modify this position to better suit the needs of the city? So once that goes through, you know, whatever manager level position initiates it, it then goes to the department director, it goes through HR, it goes through finance, and it goes through me. So each single position we rehire or fill in the city goes through a process. There's never something that's just turned over and repeated. And I believe that even is down to the police officer positions as well. So we do look at everything very strategically and comprehensively to determine if a staffing position is needed, warranted, or should be modified each time.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mark?
Same question. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Jamie?
Just for my information clarification. So when you assign the FTEs, based, and I see you do it by funds, so that, and pardon my ignorance, so is that by 100% of that fund is paid, pays that person's, like, salary, I assume, justifying the FTE? Or is it like a certain, a majority? Like, for instance, electric fund, we have not increased our rates in electric. So what if something happens where we have a huge expenditure in the electric side? Is that going to cut into salaries for the, because it says that, it looks as though their salaries are paid 100% from those funds, that's the enterprise fund?
Sure.
I'm just curious if there's a breakdown, or if it's 100%.
Yeah, so what you're seeing is the net total FTE equivalents that are paid for out of that fund.
Mm-hmm.
So we may have some positions that are charged to two different departments, or two different apartments and three different funds. So this is the net sort of cumulative of that, that sort of mass, as you allocate amongst the functions where that position spends its time.
So I, I mean, if necessary, we could move money from the general fund to pay an electric worker, if the electric funds don't cover their salary?
Well, the, the point is, we allocate up to where the work is being done.
Right.
And that, that utility or general fund is supposed to support that position.
Right. General, right. Just, I'm just thinking in hypotheticals, but I get what you're saying. Okay.
Good.
And then Jen, going back to the comparable community percentage of 75%, do we ever revisit that again someday? Is that realistic to even look at that? Is it?
Sure.
Meaning and adjusting it? Because right now, I think we're at 75%. Isn't that creating, like, some of the higher salaries that we have?
Well, sure. The 75% with, what the city has, has decided to do, and again, as I shared with you last week, this goes back decades.
Sure.
Has decided to pay above the market. So an employer can decide to pay above the market, at the market, or below the market. And of course, there's consequences to making any one of those choices. They have to look at what, what they can afford. They have to look at what type of employee they want to attract. So committing the 75th percentile, what we are signaling to our employees, and certainly what we convey literally to our employees, is because we're paying above the market, we expect high-level performance. And so that's the, that's the exchange. If you're going to get paid more, you have to bring more to the table in terms of how you perform. And that has been what I've always understood, our, our residents have expected as well, a higher level of service than, than in another community. But there's, there's a price to that. And we can revisit that compensation philosophy of the 75th, paying above the market. You all can always revisit that.
Yeah.
But if we're going to have that discussion, I certainly want, would want to share with you potential consequences and hurdles involved in that.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was any flux where over so many years, we go back to that, look at that again, or if it's just where we're at, and we need to grow, grow further, that's one thing as well. So I understand that. And I know, over the years, you know, being involved with the council, we've always been happy with that percentile, so.
Yeah, the compensation philosophy of 75th percentile is set by the city council.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
You know what? A question that I've never asked when we talk about 75th percentiles, I don't actually know what that delta is worth. You know, is that 5% more than the average wage? 10%, you know?
Well, depends on kind of what average wage. If we're looking at, at the comparables, I can, I can get you that information.
Right, right. But I mean, we can say that we're at 70, 75% of, of the range, you know, what's the difference between 75?
What we're, what we're looking at is the top pay of the range. We compare top pay.
Sure.
So it's not, it's not that every employee is actually making 75%. It's, it's when you get to the top of the range.
Jen, maybe it would be helpful if you walked through exactly how you calculate 75th percentile when you're doing our compensation. Maybe that would help understanding and getting those dollars.
Yeah, because I mean, if you know, because I'm like, because you, you look at that, you're like, okay, well, we're paying more, but is that, is that 5% more than average? Like, I mean, it just, yeah, it, it's hard to get a, a, an idea scale.
Can I get that, that, that information to everybody?
You don't have to, you don't have to do that right now.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a lot of that.
Sorry, when you say compare, you're talking about comparable municipalities, not like Microsoft or something like that?
Right.
All right.
The, the market we've established, when we're talking about our compensation philosophy and the 75th percentile, and our market are those 18 communities that we've born out of the compensation study we did in 2017, that Sickich did. And there's a whole criteria in what establishes a comparable community. And there's some logic in that criteria. It looks at what are our resources? Like, what are our ability to pay, our revenue sources? And what are our service demands? You know, so we're a community that, that has a fire department, some communities don't. That's the difference in service.
Jen, as a refresher, can you share that PDF from that, whatever year?
Yeah, sure.
I can't remember that one, that we went through. Because I think that would be helpful for everyone to see the list, and also all the criteria. That was a great presentation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Anyone else have questions before moving on?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So really quickly, we wanted to touch on some of the big capital projects, non-utility related, that are being discussed for next year's budget. Obviously, Pete is here if there's any detailed questions. The Seventh Avenue Creek Culvert Replacement Project, that's a multi-year project, and the phase at Riverside and Moore is planning to be done next fiscal year. That's about 2.4 million. There are about seven alleys, there's about 15 alleys in town, and there's funds allocated next year, about 100,000 to resurface some of those alleys. The Indiana Bridge, there's an engineering study to start to examine some concepts in terms of what rehabilitation, or whatever that project might look like in terms of making improvements to that pedestrian bridge potentially. Fuel Island, Public Works, we've discussed the meeting room renovation, the City Hall Council Chamber project as well. And that is scheduled for next fiscal year. Couple roofs on some fire stations, two and three totaling about $650,000. I know we were able to accomplish a big roof replacement at Public Works earlier this year. So we're kind of moving on to the next couple of roof repairs that we have for facilities. And then sidewalk and sidewalk gap programs, looking to allocate some funds to create some, try and fill some of these sidewalk gaps throughout town. And looking at some Prairie Street Bridge repairs as well. So that's a lot of stuff there. Is any, any questions, things people want to touch on?
Right.
Could you speak to the council chamber? What, what kind of improvements are we going to do? Is, is one of them going to be audiovisual?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll let Pete walk up while I'm starting in there. But absolutely, I mean, I, I know that at least since I've started, we've had a number of complaints about the HVAC system, and people can't hear when that's out. The, the cameras on Zoom, and just the difficulties we've had really converting to that expectation of everything digital that goes on, and including the sodium, too, that's not movable. We're just not really set up in here for the expectation of digitally friendly. So that, that's really where it's driven from. So Pete, I don't know if you have any more specifics, but it will be a refresher on just the aesthetics of it as well, but it is heavily driven by the IT aspects.
Do you want to pass down the, I'm sorry, do you want to pass down the mic for Ron?
Just a quick add. We're presenting that concept in that design in February in Government Services.
Government Services, okay. And then one more question. The Indiana Bridge improvements, could you speak to that?
General improvements, non-structural, this is mainly street surfaces, sidewalk that's adjacent to that, guardrails, handrails, things like that. So nothing really structural.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. David?
Um, just a, I know Pete, you and I have talked about this. You're saying that the Culvert project, is that in fall, correct? Because of a, a railroad thing going on?
Yeah, we're still working on that final schedule. It, it has to do with the IDOT closure on Route 25 again. Our plan for Riverside, or for this Culvert replacement, is not to shut the road down fully, as we, we've done last summer, but to keep one lane open most of the time. But there is an IDOT coordination with actually the project that is happening in, in Geneva, with their closure for the railroad line that they're putting in. So that's the coordination that has really delayed this project, quite frankly, or we would have had it done already. And we're working through the schedule for that with IDOT.
No, thanks. Then also the gap program, I know, again, we've had discussions about this, I'll be over the past and what have you. Is it too early to, and I'm just curious about how your implementation, are we nowhere near even, are you going to get an intern to do a survey like we talked about, or something in the past? But how's that going to work?
You know, to be quite, quite honest, $100,000 is not going to cover 2% of the sidewalk gap. So I think this is our concept of getting a program like this established, and seeing if, if it's palatable on a budget. So we could probably pick some pretty areas that, that I know we've had some complaints about.
Like glaring issues, yeah.
School zone, things like that. We're going to take, there's a lot of priorities out there that we can choose from.
Just like immediately, low hanging fruit kind of stuff?
Right.
And then lastly, to, again, I, maybe I'm wrong, the piano factory, did, were we going to talk about like doing some upgrades or something to that bridge as well?
So for the Indiana Ped Bridge, what we have contemplated is in year one, which you see the budget for now.
Oh, so that's, okay. Oh, that's not the name, okay. I was thinking piano factory bridge, okay.
Piano Factory, yeah, yeah, that's it.
Got it, got it.
Same thing.
Okay, my bad.
This is really, this is really conceptual for this year. This is about taking some ideas and getting some feedback from council, getting some feedback from the historic commission, who has, has had some interest in this, bringing the community together to see, you know, exactly what we want to do there.
Yeah.
Second year, next year, if, if the project moves forward, would be design. And then the third year would be construction.
Got it.
It's very high-level conceptual this year.
Thanks.
Got it. Cool, thanks. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Jamie?
I was just curious if all of these costs represent the city's costs, or if any of these have any grant, grant costs or grant opportunities with them?
These are full city costs.
We do look at every opportunity we have for grants between all of our groups. We get notified of any potential for those, and, and the city applies for those regularly.
Yeah, I know, I know you do. I just wasn't sure if these were the full cost, or, okay. Thank you, thank you.
And some of these projects, too, you know, they're engineering for, or the start of them, some of those grant programs require either fully engineered or design-ready programs. So at various points, we have various projects that are eligible for application to grants. So that's why, part of the reason we keep these things moving year to year.
Right.
Will the sidewalk gap program be treated like the city facade programs? You use it, you run out, you, and then you start the new budget year? Is that, is that kind of the goal with that program?
We really haven't developed that yet. So like I said, I think for year one, it might be the, you know, the easy fill-in projects that we can get done and actually accomplish something.
Okay, yeah. And I'm just happy to see it's in there. And then, and then going back to the piano factory bridge, Fox Valley Preservation Partners, I, I had conversations with L. Watts. He does say that there are some grant opportunities with that. So I don't know if, if, if we will eventually bring him into the conversation, or the organization, maybe to assist with that when we get to that point. But just something, something to be aware of.
Yeah, we're aware of that. I've had that same conversation. And that's exactly what this first phase is going to do, is to look for grant opportunities and talk with folks like him.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And anyone else have any comments regarding that slide?
Okay. Thank you. We've talked about the road program a little bit in the past. I think we even went to council. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, other than it's a much larger program than previous years because of the new sales tax revenue, roughly $7 million when you look at all different funds combined. We are going to need to identify sources of revenue to pay for sometimes the water main replacements done in conjunction with the road program. Right now, there's, you know, we're kind of starting this sort of catch-up phase with roads and different improvements, and focusing on streets that don't require a lot of water utility upgrades as well. So, but eventually, some of the more water main intensive streets are going to need to be done. And so we'll have to have a conversation about how do we fund the water and utility work, and sewer-related work associated with road improvements. So I know we touched on some of the, this is just kind of general capital projects for the future. We are probably looking, going forward, five to six million dollars a year of street improvement, a lot of catch-up work to be done in conjunction with the additional tax revenues that the city is receiving. Bike and Peds, I know that there is a, some money allocated for design and planning and research in terms of what needs to be done priority-wise going forward, what grant opportunities are out there. There is a $250,000 grant, DCEO funding, that was in the budget for this upcoming year for some improvements. But I know that is the, sort of the planning process for the bike and pet plan at this point. I know Pete talked about the pedestrian bridge a little bit. And lastly, the Redgate Bridge railing project, again, that's replacing those railings. There's some work going to go into designing and analyzing what the best route is to go with those, with potential project being done in '25, '26. So any questions on those future projects? Or Pete, anything else you want to mention?
Anything?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, we're, we have, we have a little month, not a little, but we have some money, several million dollars set aside, right, for capital? Isn't that like 9 million or something like that?
That was roughly our fund balance in our capital projects fund at the end of last year, correct?
Okay. And it's, it's the same, obviously, 9?
That's something we're doing with our projections, and then looking ahead next year in terms of what our capital is going to be to kind of see where we're landing as far as that. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so.
So when this time, I know we have allotted for a break. I know some of you are getting up, as you will. So I would like an out-of-head, do you all want a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay, so is five minutes okay?
Just get off.
You've been just getting up, yeah.
Just get off.
So should we just, is around number 6:35?
Yeah.
That's good? Okay, 6:35, we're back.
Got it.
We're floating in in a few minutes, can float in.
Meeting will usually done.
We are now moving on to, am I on, are we on Water and Sewer? Oh, yes, Peter's office. All right, the director, sir, you have the floor.
Okay, we're all set.
Yep.
So not many of you are in your current role, and elected officials from 2018 to '20. So I've got a little bit of history to start with in regards to water and sewer major capital projects. Back in that time was really the last time that my team, my Public Works team and I had prepared and presented a series of major sewer and water capital projects for the city council's consideration. At that, at that time, there were some significant capital projects identified to be complete, and were referenced in several studies and master plans that were completed by our department from 2015 to 2018. I've listed some of these major studies here on the bottom of this slide. We did a large facilities plan in 2015 for both of our wastewater treatment plants. And we did a C-MOM study in 2016, and then a large water utility master plan in 2018. Typically, these type of studies guide our capital projects and our operations. We do them, we try to schedule them at least every 10 years, if not a little bit sooner. So we actually have some of these facilities planned in our upcoming budgets in the next year or two to redo. So to get the conversation started for Bill, I will review in not too much technical detail, some of the largest water and sewer capital projects.
uh, some of the largest water and sewer capital projects that we have already completed over the last three to five years, uh, that are currently in, 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 in process, and also what we have budgeted for the next three to four or five years as well. All of these projects, uh, capital projects are contributing to the financial difficulties in both the water and sewer funds, and Bill, I'm sure, will express that, and you'll see, uh, right away, and you can see on this slide, uh, some of the, the large, uh, project costs. Just to paint a picture, in 2019, uh, and 20, and actually many years before that, the, um, the city was really at a crossroads in regards to water and sewer infrastructure. Um, St. Charles was seeing a lot of new residential and commercial, commercial growth at the time, and there were several large planned developments as well. Um, in addition, both the utilities were stressed by aging infrastructure. Um, on the water side, we are seeing a deficiency in total water capacity for the city, and from on the sewer side, um, the same thing, the city's capacity for wastewater sewer was deficient in certain areas of the city. Um, so just to break away from the conversation a little bit, and you'll hear some of this in, in my presentation, uh, to give you some perspective about the differences between the water utility and the wastewater utility. The water, when we talk about, um, capacity, or the amount of water the city has, is really citywide. Um, if we're drilling a well on the west side, that capacity, uh, helps us on the east side, helps the entire utility and our water sources. Um, for the, for the wastewater side, it's more regional, it's, it's, it's based on a particular neighborhood or area or development, uh, really based on, on the wastewater basin that, that, um, so it's more specific to a particular location of the, of the community. So, that's just the concept that you'll hear over, over my presentation here. Um, in 2020, the city council pressed forward with giving us the approval to design permit and construct several major capital projects in response to, um, these needs. I'll list, uh, the projects here above that have actually been completed, um, or will be very soon. Um, just briefly, I know that some of you, um, weren't around when these were approved, so I'll go through just a, a brief description. Route 31 and Roosevelt Sewer Trunk Main, uh, $2.8 million, this project was completed about four years ago and was really in response to capacity needs for the new Shodine Prairie Center project. This is a long sewer replacement project that started where our sewer main crosses the river at where we call the Siphon, um, that is at about the river in Moesdale, and it went straight down south, uh, down Route 31 to about Roosevelt Street. Then it traveled west to the Shodine Development. Um, just a little side note, I think it's worth mentioning, is that the Shodine Development did pay for a portion of this project in accordance with their RDA. Um, Well 7 and Well 13 Waterwell Combination Project was complete to increase the city's total water supply, which at the time was deficient by about 1.1 million gallons of wa, uh, a day. Uh, Well 7 is located on Randall Road next to the Export Fitness, uh, across from the Audi dealership. Um, this well's water production at the time was severely limited by, uh, limited by aging infrastructure, and the treatment facility that was associated with that well was well past its usable life and in poor condition. Um, now that that project is complete, Well Number 7, uh, harvests water at a greater rate than it's ever done before, and actually, that harvest water is then pumped to Well 13, we eliminated the treatment facility on that site. Uh, so you don't see a building there anymore, if you drive by. Uh, Well Number 13 is a, is across Oak Street from the post office building, and that's a newer facility for us. So, the newer facility at Well 13 now treats the water from both of these wells. Um, it's more efficient and has increased our water supply citywide by 1.4 million gallons a day. Uh, this, at the time, eliminated that deficit that we had as a city for water. This really was a win-win project, uh, from not only an efficiency perspective for operations, but combining those two wells, um, and, and eliminating that severe deficit of water was, uh, was, was a wonderful project. Uh, Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant, um, was always contemplated to be complete in four phases as the city developed and the need for wastewater treatment was in need on the west side of our city. Phase 1 was actually the phase when the city purchased the existing wastewater treatment plant from the state of Illinois in 1992. And at that time, we, we did a project and increased the capacity to 350,000 gallons a day. Phase 2 was completed in 2001, and that, uh, increased the capacity of that wastewater facility to 700,000 gallons a day. Phase 3 is the, is the, um, project that you're seeing up on the board for 18.1 million dollars. Um, that was just completed this past summer and increased capacity to over a million gallons a day, that is our current capacity. I'll also mention that, um, that also included a phosphorus, um, removal process, which the EPA now requires of wastewater treatment plants. Phase 4 is in the future, um, which will increase that, uh, capacity to 1.4 million gallons a day. It is not in our next three or four-year capital project at that point in time, and will be, um, triggered when development is, uh, is needed there. Riverside Lift Station is, uh, currently under construction right now, if you pass the Riverside Drive, you see some activity over there. Um, it collects all of the wastewater west of the river to Randall Road, and pumps it up to the head of our wastewater plant at the Public Works Campus. Existing aging facility that currently sits between Riverside Drive and the river, uh, will be demolished, demolished pretty soon here, and that project will be complete this spring. Um, that will almost double the capacity of the existing facility that, that currently is online, and will contain new infrastructure to last the next fifty years. The Eastern, uh, you can see the price tag for that too, 15.5 million dollars, and we've identified which projects are IEP-A loan, um, projects as well. The Eastern Sanitary Sewer Trunk Main, I will describe a little bit further. Uh, we have already completed Phase 1, but Phase 2 and Phase 3, uh, still exist, so, um, I will reference that project in a little bit here. But you can see, in total, 48 million dollars over the past four years, pretty impressive, it's really improved our system, but we have a, a little ways to go in regards to large capital projects. Um, and just to point out, even though we've really highlighted the large projects on both the water and wastewater side, this represents another dozen or so projects that are somewhere between 500,000 and 2.5 million dollars that have also been complete, that start to improve some of our lift, lift stations, um, our technology base with SCADA, uh, water main projects and things like that. So, there are a lot of infill projects that we don't always highlight, uh, because they don't hit the 15 to 20 million dollar range, but they, they add up as well. So now, we're gonna focus on, uh, our proposal for future capital projects. Um, this is listed here on this slide, and we'll go into brief description on each one of these projects, but again, just wanted to focus in on the cost of some of these projects as well. Spent a lot over the last five years on capital projects, and we still have, uh, a ways to go. You know, at that, this point in time, that you probably are looking back and going, why? Why all of these projects, why now? Um, I think it's a fair question, it was asked of us four or five years ago, and, uh, we really have broken it down, there's several reasons, but we really have broken it down into three serious project drivers. And this isn't rocket science, this is pretty simple to understand, um, capacity and supply. We've got growth, we've got economic development, we've got good things that are happening for the community, but our existing infrastructure is too small to, to handle that, and so, not only on the water side, but on the, on the sewer side, things need to increase in size to handle, uh, the growth and the economic development. Maintenance, pretty easy, aging infrastructure, you know, a lot of our existing facilities in the ground especially are fifty-plus years old, and it's just time to, to replace them, and we've done a good job of that so far. Um, and then the third, uh, main driver here is unfunded mandates. Um, the US and IEP-A, uh, LMI, Environmental Protection Agency, continue to challenge us with, uh, new codes and requirements. Uh, the lead service line discussion is certainly fits right into that category. Um, we've spent a lot of money over the years on what we call CMOM, and, uh, phosphorus removal for both the west side and main treatment plants probably doubled the cost of those projects for that requirement that's, uh, an EPA funded mandate. Um, so, I do get a lot of questions like, well, you know, is our community really growing that much? The population doesn't change that much, and, you know, I, look, why, why, why do these utilities, are, are they impacted so much by the, the simple developments? But, this gives you a little snapshot of some of the things, this is just on the east side, and affects both the water and sewer capital projects. On the left side is completed or permitted projects, you can look at that list, Charleston Lakes, Springs, the State Charles, McGrath, Pheasant Run, um, Tiger Drylock, Munhall Glen, all of these projects contributed to really capacity needs for both of these utilities. And then on the right side is proposed or future, I mean, some of those things are happening right now as we speak, Pheasant Run Lot 2 and 3, McGrath Lot, uh, Pheasant Run, um, Smithfield Foods, um, it gives you a little snapshot of why, um, which projects are really hitting some of these utility drivers. So, um, I'll go into just a real brief description on some of these future proposed projects. Um, Well Number 8, I'm getting caught up in my notes here. Uh, Well Number 8 is, uh, located at Ohio Avenue and 37th Avenue on the east side of, uh, our city in the CMD area. Uh, this is really a capacity-driven project. Uh, we are currently, uh, the city is currently at a water deficiency of just below a million gallons a day. There's no need to be concerned about that, that's not a big deal, uh, we can manage that, but as these developments continue to grow, we need to harvest more water, in essence, to, uh, support those developments. Uh, so this Waterwell 8 Capacity and Treatment will add, uh, 1.152 million gallons a day to cover that deficiency that is, uh, current and is expected in future development. The project includes drilling a new deep well, um, it includes getting the water, what we call the raw water line from that deep well to the treatment facility, which, uh, is, which exists on Well 8, uh, site, but it is also rehabbing all of the well site, not only the filters, but the building and the, and the, uh, technology inside that building. Again, huge cost for these projects, uh, almost 19 million dollars for this, and we could be constructing this in 25, uh, in, in 2025. Um, so, this additional future well, not, uh, need to really worry about this project now, this is, uh, looking three, five, seven years down the road, but we anticipate, based on, uh, our development list, that we will also have future water deficiencies of about a half a million gallons a day. Um, so this is actually adding a whole new water well to our site. Uh, most likely, this would happen on the west side of our town. Currently, we are looking at, uh, doing a test drilling well and locating the water source, it's very EPA, um, centric project, it takes, uh, two or three years just to find the water source, and then, uh, design and construction could start anywhere after 27, and, and when the need is, is needed. Uh, but again, another huge dollar amount, uh, 18.8 million dollars associated with that cost right now. Uh, Lead Service Line, I'm not gonna get into any detail here, uh, Tim Wilson has done a good job of getting you prepped for some of the conversations, and he's coming back in February to continue that dialogue. Um, this is, uh, certainly related to an unfunded mandate, uh, 2.2 million dollars annually for the next ten to fifteen years on a project like that, if the city, uh, funds that completely. So, East Side Sanitary Sewer Trunk Main, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we had already completed Phase 1. This, um, is kind of a trifecta, all three drivers are contributing to this project. Not only aging infrastructure, it is, uh, capacity, uh, based on the development growth on the east side, and also EPA mandates that are hitting this project. Um, this is a large replacement and expansion of, um, the sanitary sewer trunk main that's on the east side, and it really covers a, a majority of the area on the east side. Phase 1, which we completed, uh, two summers ago, um, starts at the, at the corner of Main and Couch, just a corner to the mall, and goes down Couch Road, uh, to where the ra, uh, railroad spur crosses Couch Road there. That's on the right-hand side of your map there, I know this map is difficult to, to read. Uh, that total cost for Phase 1 was 4.8 million dollars. Phase 2, we are currently, uh, studying, we've been working on Phase 2 for about a year and a half now. In essence, that, that, um, takes to where we finished Phase 1 at the corner of, uh, Couch Road and the railroad spur, and it runs right down the railroad, uh, line, all the way to Munhall Glen. So, there's been a lot of discussion with our staff and our team and our consultants with UP Railroad to try to understand what their requirements are gonna be for easements and getting a sanitary sewer line, uh, through that, that, that alley. Um, we could be ready to roll on that project in 24 to 26, and, uh, you can see the cost of that is, uh, pushing over 23 million dollars for that, uh, sanitary line. And then Phase 3 takes it from the end of that, Munhall Glen, and it, it brings the sanitary all the way back to our wastewater treatment plant at the Public Works Facility. That is the most difficult phase, it goes through some of our older neighborhoods, um, it's the deepest, um, sewer project that I've been involved with, uh, thirty feet in some locations in that, at that location, very large pipe, uh, so, we haven't even really started to contemplate the design on that phase, but it's gonna be a tricky one, and it's gonna also cause other capital projects to go, such as maybe stormwater projects, ripping up streets, uh, if you've got a hole dug in the ground, is the time to put, uh, electrical lines from above-ground to underground and so on and so forth. So, that, that's gonna be a, a tangle of, uh, projects associated with Phase 3.
Would you mind if we pause your mark at the front?
Sure.
With Phases 2 and 3 coming through and getting done, and right now, there's nothing being done with the mall, but does this make sure that this would not have to be updated if something were to come at the mall and develop? Does this, like, take care of that?
Um, yes, uh, we would need to do all three phases to develop not only the mall, but all of the other projects associated in that area, some of the information I provided, to, to hold the capacity for all of that.
So, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, like, come back later and be like, well, now we're not, now we have to redo and redo, this would take care of what, what you're foreseeing in the future?
That's correct, that's correct.
The appropriate time to start talking about the number of different ways this project could be triggered to be necessary, and if something like the mall were to develop and immediately have this need, we would be behind the, the eight ball on starting this. So, there are a number of different ways that we could end up behind, and we, we essentially need to start going with this project now to ensure that we are able to facilitate the economic development on the east side and make sure that we can sustain any of these projects. And it's not just the mall, it's a number of other smaller things that could be done that would trigger this as well, and at some point, if we don't move on the expeditiously, in the next, start this planning in the next two years, uh, then we will be at a point where we will have to tell development, and sometimes some of this large development, no, we cannot proceed with this.
That's what I was wondering, I wanted to make sure if this was done, it was, to make sure that everything was keeping on.
This is going to be absolutely necessary at some point soon, hopefully sooner, based on, uh, development happening, but we don't wanna be in a position that we're not able to permit a project because this is not in the works.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a little continuation on that, uh, in regards to permitting with EPA. Um, they, they, they look at water and, and sewer differently, EPA. EPA will, will stop development for sewer and wastewater projects, they won't necessarily for water projects. So, you can be deficient, uh, on your water count, uh, and they won't stop development, but EPA, if you don't have the sewer infrastructure in place at the time that these things were built, then they can step in and say no to that development, so something to keep in mind there. Um, this just gives you a little perspective in this, this slide, and, oh, it's-
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, that, that's interesting you mentioned that, uh, is that, do you know why? I mean, is that because you can, you can store water, right, on a, on a site and have it utilized?
Well, uh, it kinda goes back to that original concept where water for our city, um, is, is all interconnected, so, you know, the capacity there from one side to the next is a little easier. Sewer is not necessarily that way, it's all based on a basin and, and kinda located in a particular area of the city.
That's rationale for the IEP-A for that, okay, just curious, yeah, interesting.
So, this, this map's a little crooked, it just fit better on this slide, but, um, what it represents is that blue line, it really represents that, that main sewer line that we're talking about. that, that main sewer line that we're talking about. The little portion along Couch is already built. The red lines are all of the sewers that connect to that blue line. So you can see how big this area is and why these costs are so extreme and the size of the sewer just gives you some perspective. There is one other smaller, I hate to say smaller projects, but two, two point seven and three point eight million dollar projects that are in our budget here for the next couple of years. This is really based on aging infrastructure. We've got large clarifiers. This is the last, basically settling basin, one of the last parts of our wastewater treatment plant facility that needs some repairs and UV disinfection, which is the last process in wastewater to disinfect the water before it gets sent to our river. So again, maintenance, aging, infrastructure, capital projects. Any questions before Bill comes up?
So kind of breaking down from a current year operating fund basis on the water fund. Our current water revenues are budgeted about ten point two million and most of that is water charges, about nine point seven million. Our operating expenses, you can see the pie chart to the right, in the current fiscal year, we budgeted to be about seven point six million. Currently forecasting that to be about eight point four million. So that's due to cost increases we'll talk about next, but that really only leaves about one point eight million on an annual basis for funding capital outlays that can't be funded by either IEP loans or bonds. You can see the chart on the right, the components of our current operating budget in the water fund. Roughly twenty-eight percent debt service, that's just decumulation of various bonds and loans that have been issued over the years to fund some of these capital projects and then personnel and various contractual services. On a rough basis, you know, Pete went over a whole bunch of projects, some of those obviously we're looking at IEP loans in the future for. We talk about water main replacement, different things, really looking, need about four to, four to five million dollars a year for pay-as-you-go funding for water capital improvements to fund the sort of routine things that come up every year, trying to catch up on some of that aging infrastructure. Right now, if we, and we'll go over some operating cost increases that we've seen, we'd be looking at roughly ten point two million in revenues, expenses of nine point one million, and that brings it down to about one point one million as far as the funds that we would have to go over to pay for capital projects on a pay-as-you-go basis in the water fund. One of the operating cost drivers that we've seen in the water fund over the last year is an increase in water distribution repairs, leaks and emergencies that occurred in the distribution system. Those issues have resulted in an increase in costs over the year. We've seen some budget additions that we've had to do for contractual water main distribution repairs, materials, haul lane restoration costs, contracted line repair, and those costs have increased probably about four hundred thousand dollars from budget to budget basis over this last year. One of the other issues associated with that is the amount of time in terms of water labors that need to be spent repairing water main breaks has increased and really starting to tax some of their other duties and responsibilities as a department as a whole. So one of the staffing plans for next year is to look at a phasing end of additional water labors to help out with those costs over the next two years is kind of what we're looking at. They may have changed slightly as we work through the operating budget, but that's one of the cost drivers that we're looking at in the water fund. We are also looking at, again, this year implementing new water meter system approved in two thousand twenty-three and replacement of the water meter and water meter reading system with the new contracted selected software to do them as well and pick up those reads and replace the aging equipment that we no longer have replacement parts to replace. Over time, over ten years, that's probably going to be about one point one million dollars on an annual basis. And again, some of that cost we've started to incur in the current year, but we will be realizing that cost on a full annual basis going forward next fiscal year. So this chart is just the, the breaks and leaks to date in the water system and over the years with that last line over there being year-to-date issues in the distribution system for the current fiscal year.
The four additional staff, is that hypothetically, could we contract that out rather than having full-time operating staff on our, in our payroll?
That's, that's one of the options I think that was looked at, but that can be prohibitively expensive to keep doing more contractual and contractual repairs. And I think they do that right now for certain times when they can handle certain issues. It's more cost effective to have that personnel in-house. They can also do other things and other tasks that they're tended to, running out of time to do on a regular basis. So this was a map, Peter alluded to the facility plan that was done in two thousand eighteen in terms of water main and age of it. This kind of illustrates throughout the water distribution system, the age of the various water main replacements and the number of miles based on age category, just to give you a snapshot of where some of the older water mains are and how that looks throughout. I don't know a lot about specifics with water main, but sometimes age isn't the only factor that goes into water main. It could be, you know, certain types of water main constructed in a certain decade, such as the sixties or seventies might have been problematic in certain situations as well. So there's a lot goes into it, but we wanted to put this map up as a reference so everyone kind of understood the overall number of miles of water main the city has and generally the age of that water main.
Just a general question maybe for Peter. Where, where do you see most of the water main breaks? Is it in the older section of the city? Is it kind of all over the, the city?
Uh, yeah, definitely the older sections. I mean, this, if you look at the red lines there, that's, that's, that's the oldest infrastructure and that's where we're seeing those breaks.
Okay. What's, sorry, what's the blue? I can't read in this, on the thing. It says an L, is that it? Oh, I'll get to you. Okay.
So not to spend a lot more time talking about capital, we kind of covered that, but depending on funding and as we work through this process, it's budgeted, there are a couple of big water main projects looking to be done next year that I think were actually planned to be done in this current year, but structurally the funding wasn't there to do that, those projects being on Prairie, Seventh, Sixth and Fourth Streets. We're also going to have a certain amount of water main work associated with the annual bill program and that's going to vary between a half million, a million dollars a year. There's also water main replacement projects planned for the next several years for problem areas that aren't associated with growth necessarily. Those areas can be roughly one point two to one point eight million dollars a year in terms of what those capital costs will be on an annual basis. Pete's touched on the lead service lines and the other two expansion projects, so I'm not going to have to mention those again. And then really quickly on the sewer side, it's similar to the water fund. We have roughly twelve point eight million dollars a year in sewer charges, eleven point three million in expenses, this is our current year budget. Debt service, a little higher than sewer fund than the water fund currently, thirty-seven percent of operating expenditures in the sewer fund are related to funding debt service. After all the other expenses are accounted for, that leaves about one and a half million dollars a year for capital outlays, again, on a page you go basis in the sewer fund. So this kind of shows a chart of the annual debt service in both the water and the wastewater fund over the last several years and this being the current year. And you can see as these projects are accumulated, are finished and completed, we need to begin paying, repaying those IEP loans that are taken out to fund those projects. And you can see the big jumps in that annual debt service payment as those projects are completed. Obviously, well eight and future well capacity could vary based on when those get completed and actually finalized. But again, you're looking at from an illustrative perspective, what that jump in debt service will look like once those projects get completed. Again, to clarify, this assumes no debt financing on the eastern sanitary sewer trunk main phases that we had mentioned earlier. So obviously with phase two and phase three, full funding of thirty-nine million dollar project is not possible within sewer fund resources. I think if this project, if this project is moving forward as expeditiously as possible, as Heather mentioned, there's different strategies that we'll try and use to finance this project. We do have a small amount of sanitary sewer reserves related in relation to the cost of this project that we could use, but we do have certain working capital requirements that we want to maintain the sewer fund so that the fund remains in a good position. So I'm not sure what that number would be offhand, but it's probably a single-digit number in terms of what we could commit from the sewer fund to get that project done. We potentially could look at our capital fund or some other funds and reserves we have to move this project forward as well. And we could also look at a general obligation bond issuance to fund this project if we need to. That would require us obviously to identify how that bond would be repaid, but that's a discussion that we would have to have if we got to that point based on project timing. And again, there's no recommendation about how to move forward with this at this time. These are just strategies. A lot of it's going to depend on project timing. One of these things may be more or less important if a project is done sooner rather than later or if there's some delays in getting the next phase going and we're able to, to, and use more of one of these strategies to get this project accomplished. So I think, I think as Heather said, you know, this project is, you know, been kind of directed to move forward. That being the case, you know, these are types of things that we're going to look at and probably come back with some sort of recommendation or discussion at some point when we need So at, at one of the things that we're looking at, obviously in terms of the water and sewer fund finances is the rates. Ideally, we probably need somewhere in the neighborhood of a twenty-five percent adjustment to meet all of our operating and capital and debt service reserves, debt service funding needs. That's, you know, unrealistic in terms of, you know, what that impact means for customers. One of the things that is happening right now, there are updated facility plans being done for water, sewer and electric. Those are anticipated to be done in two thousand twenty-five. One of the things that we're looking at doing is initiating a water sewer electric utility rate study behind that and try and come up with a, a plan for funding going forward. It's possible that could be done in two thousand twenty-six, but that could, for various reasons, be completed later than that. So one of the things that we're looking to do as in the interim is looking at a series of moderate, smaller rate increases on both the water and sewer side for a multi-year period so that we can continue to try and keep pace with some of the operational cost increases that we had, maintain our debt service funding payments and then try and prioritize capital improvements that we can fund out of the water sewer fund while doing that. We're not going to be able to fund all of the water and sewer capital needs out of the water and sewer fund, that's just not possible. So we'll try and strategize in terms of how do we come up with alternate sources of funding to get some of these things done if we need to and essentially subsidize those water and sewer funds in the interim. Looking at approving a series of increases over a multi-year period, that's not uncommon. That gives staff and us the ability to plan for how we're going to fund operations, how we're going to pay debt service and how we're going to fund critical capital improvements over a multi-year time horizon, rather than looking at these on a year-to-year basis, not knowing exactly what the, the funding plan is going to be for some of these things. So one of the things that we'll be looking at getting would be some sort of discussion and direction on a series of moderate increases over a multi-year period so that we could get those incorporated into a draft budget potentially before the end of February. There's different options obviously available, listed some of the illustrative options there. I think any one of those or some version would help us sort of bridge this gap that we're dealing with in terms of funds that we have on hand and funds that we need for operations and capital improvements and our bond and loan obligations.
Are, are you looking for feedback on your options, like the different, I mean, I understand obviously you need money to do these projects. So I mean, I'm comfortable with option one and two, whichever one, those seem reasonable to me if you're looking for feedback.
Yes, I think. We are looking for feedback exactly, and, and the rationale for this is we had a rate study that expired last year and up until last year, we, the last few years, we had not followed the recommended increases for those. Those were based on past projects that we had anticipated and undertaken. So the increase that we're asking until we get a new rate study in place is really just to sort of keep pace with inflation and some of the operational costs that we're incurring. This really isn't tackling any of the major projects or debt issuance that we would need, but it will prevent us from, when we do get a rate study in place, a rate study recommending something in a ballpark is built out of twenty-five percent or more because we are incurring a number of projects that are unfortunately necessary just to keep the utility operating in a way that we can provide services to the residents. Just as a reminder, I know that it's, it's not uncomfortable to talk about, or it's not comfortable to talk about increasing utility rates, but from an operational perspective, that utility should be self-sustaining and we just aren't there at this point. We're really barely keeping afloat with the existing projects that we have.
So unless you have anything else, I think I'll start with this side for comments and related to this topic.
Sure.
Are you open for that? Yes. Okay. Do you have anything, Pete?
Sure, sure. I, I could say the, the theme of your overall meeting tonight, a lot of things that we're having to address is catch-up, catch-up, catch-up. I don't want to be a part of a council that, you know, puts, you know, the next four, eight, twelve years in a position where they're having these same conversations. Obviously, I, I hate doing any increases at all. Nobody wants increases, but I, I definitely feel like we have to put ourselves in a position to at least maintain what we have going on, you know? Saving a percent here or there a year is not going to help anything in the future. So, you know, option three, eight percent this year, that's, that's a big jump. I'd be more in favor of, you know, spread it a little bit, but definitely there has to be increases. I mean, there's nothing you can do about it. Question, IEP A loans, what is the interest rate on them and how long, what's the terms on them?
Uh, it's been, I'm, I'm guessing it was around one, one and a half percent recently, but they reset that periodically based on what the market is right now, I think. So it's possible that could be up to probably something of two, two and a half. I'm, I'm speculating at this point, but that's.
Okay.
It's still low compared to going out for a general obligation bond.
They have historically low, and the other thing I will say is some projects, and I know we've talked about this a little bit, lead service lines, there may be some principal forgiveness on as well. So that's always a first source we go to.
And then terms of loan, how, how long do we have to repay?
Twenty years.
Twenty years? What's the current bond market at right now?
Ballpark is probably three, seven, five, four, give or take.
There's also more flexibility on the bond market in terms of that length as well, so that can help us a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
And do you have anything?
Yeah, real quick, this goes back to what I was asking earlier, I believe, and, and, you know, my experience with the electric fund is itself sustaining to a certain degree right now, and I'd like to see the, you know, the water go the same direct direction. I guess the question I would have, not for tonight, but it, you know, the next time we meet or the next time we discuss this would be more what this average cost would be, you know, per, per household, simple as that. But I, you know, and then I can make a decision on any one of those three options.
Yeah, I think based on some of these numbers, it's around, I think, when we looked at last time, about eight dollars a month, eight dollars a month. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Brian?
No, it's option one or two. I think both very reasonable.
Thank you, David.
Um, you know, I, Steve made great points. I, we can't, we can't get out of this. We, that increases needed, of course. Being someone who works, worked for a utility, I get the rates, have to pay for themselves. I would say one, I'm a little bit more comfortable with, but I mean, can, are we, can we address additional or discuss additional, I know we've talked about revenue sources before in the past, right? I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, impact fees, things that, I don't know, are these, these are little drops, but are, are they things that we can discuss and supplement these sort of break?
Sure. I mean, um, yeah, we can have conversations. I think we, we increased connection fees last year. We did the study. That's something we can take a second look at again. Maybe there's an inflationary increase that we can put towards that, but that's something we can have a conversation on.
All right. Cool. Okay.
Yep. Option one or two, obviously we have to fund it. It's just how do we do it? The less painful for all of us residents that use water and sort. So either option one or two and look at something long-term to sustain what we need in order to cover the operating costs would be my recommendation.
Option one would be my preferred.
Jamie?
Um, I, I'd just like to agree with older person Weber about making sure that we're setting ourselves up for success going forward. setting ourselves up for success going forward and not pushing us down the road for future, future councils, and I, I would be supportive of either one or two for, for obvious reasons. You don't want to make this more painful for people than they have to. I would be curious what kind of other options we do have to Alderman, Patralla's point, like what, what options are available to us for different types of funding, you know, pieces where we can bring them in from, can we have different types of rates for businesses or new businesses coming in?
Sure.
Um, you know, high, high usage, um, right, you know, high usage businesses, that sort of thing, so, those would be my questions.
Thank you, Brian?
Yeah, I agree with what everybody said, so.
Mark?
Yeah, I think with all the possible development that could be coming, the east side especially, I think one or two is a, a great option to help with that and make sure we're setting ourselves up for success. And Steve, you kind of nailed it, we got to make sure that future bodies are set up for success moving forward, and I like to hear that we're all kind of thinking in that mindset too, that we're not just looking at it as a year from now, but really, really down the road, big picture, because I think that is something that is very much needed for our city.
Thank you, and Ron, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, well, one or two would be fine, I mean, I think we need to be proactive instead of reactive, let's get ahead of the game here so we don't have to push it down the road. So, yeah.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
And if I can just make one comment too, I do want to commend the mayor and council. I, you know, I know these aren't easy discussions, and I know that in the last couple of years we've had a lot of these things that, you know, have just been looked at a different way and in a different perspective than they have been historically, and we are having a lot of tough conversations and trying to make sure that the city is set up infrastructure-wise and for the future in a way that's sustainable, we are taking care of all of the needs to make sure that we can best serve the residents. So, I just want to thank council on behalf of staff as well. Like I said, I know these aren't easy discussions, but they are necessary, and that's unfortunately what Bill and I are here doing, trying to tackle those difficult problems and making sure you are aware of them.
Thank you, Director Hannah, do you have anything else?
No, just to clarify, we will bring something to the February fifth Government Operations Committee meeting via ordinance and something that would approve at February 19th, a series of multi-year increases at that meeting.
And to Alderman Patralla's comment, I would like to see if we could also provide what has been done in terms of other impact fees that he's mentioned, you've mentioned what we've done in the past, and just some of those ideas as you referenced, if they are potentially useful.
Sure, will do, all right, thank you.
Oh, sorry, and thank you for that, yeah, I mean, the more information, the better. Also, to Jamie's point, great idea, our, did our rate study, pardon my ignorance, did it tackle like a variable rate for type business class or something like that, like she suggested, or is that something we'd have to look into?
The prior rate study?
Or, yeah, we had one before, did they, did they address that?
No, I mean, that was done.
Yeah, that's, okay.
A while back, and that's something, that's a good topic for a future rate study, once we've even done that.
Yeah, right, okay. Yeah, that would be very interesting too, that, so.
Thank you, and thank you, Steph, for all the time and effort put into your budgets and preparing this and preparing for February two. At this time, I believe, we're moving on to item number four, which is east side interceptors.
No, I'm sorry, that was already wrapped into the, yeah, sorry, I apologize.
I looked at item number four.
We just rolled right in through it.
So, the next couple of items, I know item five and six are items that have been brought up by council as items they'd like to discuss, and I think at this time, I know both of them are listed on that slide, but City Administrator, I know you have some comments regarding liquor licenses. I also have some comments I'd like to make after you give a brief synopsis, or would you like me to make?
I was just saying, if you want to go ahead and then I can just wrap up whatever is not covered.
Okay, so, um, there are a couple of comments I'd like to make about my opinion regarding this topic, and then I know council wants to discuss it. A few notes, sorry, you know, I've, I know that this has been brought up primarily about the fourth ward, and as a prior Alderman for that ward, I, I do know that I've received comments in the past about what if, and what if we get to that point, would there be discussion? However, in my time, I've never received a comment that was about that, we had an overabundance of liquor licenses, so I'll just put that out there. Um, in the work that we do with Metro West and talking with various communities, St. Charles is always put up as the highest esteem for options for residents, options for visitors, and also being a business-friendly community, and I know that communities in our area are trying to catch up with us, and, you know, from my perspective, I want to make sure that we continue to be competitive and look at being open-minded and flexible in what we do in this community. I also know that we've had conversations up here on the dais about potential businesses other than what we would call a bar. However, I do know that we have several businesses that aren't necessarily in that bar contingent like salons and, for example, Urban Air, that currently hold liquor licenses, so I just want to make sure we all understand that. In addition to that, I do know that we have available Attorney Peppers and Chief Keegan, and they have interjected comments in the past on this topic, and because of their expertise, both of them in other communities, and Chief specifically in the current state of our bar and restaurant contingent, I do want to make sure that you're available to weigh in on your opinion and/or recommendations regarding this topic. So, I don't have a specific order, I'll turn it over to you, and then this can be open for discussion.
Yeah, if I could, just a quick reminder that we had two lingering items from last workshop that were council-driven initiatives that we were going to tackle at a future workshop, that's for today. I have put on the slide in front of you some of the dialogue that was shared at that last workshop regarding limitation on liquor licenses. I won't go over each one of those comments, so those are all the comments that council made. Um, one of the things I did want to note was that we requested some specific feedback on, in terms of how to change the liquor licenses before we tackled it and invested a lot of time, there are just so many different options we have as far as how we could modify or restrict our liquor license ordinance. So, I did put out a request to council members in November regarding this topic in anticipation of the workshop. I did receive count, uh, feedback from one council member and then a second that supported this exact statement that was given to me, so this is the only feedback I received on how to potentially amend this ordinance, so at this point, I think it's really going to be primarily discussion driven by the city council on if and how we would like to amend this, this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, City Administrator. Anyone, I guess I'll go to the right, but, no, I, I'll do that, I'll, do you have any comments you'd like to make about this topic right now?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's not my request, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you want me to start, since I, I started?
Is this for those, is this your comments?
Yeah, that is, like, so, so, no, I, we'll get the ball rolling. So, Heather, thanks for summarizing this, a couple of clarifications, and I know we're at 7:30, so I'm, we're standing between this discussion and adjournment, should we table this to the next 3:30?
There's one more, there's one more, there's still one more.
Okay.
Your recommendation?
Just to be as pithy and clear and concise as possible, I think that we started up here and then kind of got into the weeds, and we talked and talked to some others, the proposal, and I'll just throw it out there, is a temporary moratorium on Class C licenses, the tavern, Class C tavern, saloon licenses. That's essentially, you wanted specifics, I think, if, that's, that's what we should discuss. I think that's, that's the primary recommendation. Now, I know originally, yeah, I was, we were up in the clouds, you know, liquor licenses, there was some agitation and angst about like, oh no, we're gonna, you know, reduce all liquor licenses, not at all, we're just talking class in the downtown overlay district, not throughout the city too.
Okay, Jamie, just for clarification, Chief, can you outline specifically what Class C is for?
Sure, so, just, I'll just do a couple of overreaching comments. We have about 130 liquor licenses in the city, 30 late-night permits, so that's 1:00 or 2:00 AM, everybody's licensed for midnight. We have seven C licenses, and a C license is really, in layman's terms, a bar tavern without a commercial kitchen. Of those seven licenses, three are owned by the same two proprietors, and then two others are owned by, um, two proprietors as well. So, of the seven C licenses, two different ownership groups comprise five of those seven. Of the other two, which is House Pub and Global Beer, House Pub's been in existence for 15, 20 years or so, that's right here on Riverside. So, we have seven licenses that don't have kitchens, there is an eighth that has a C classification, and that is Duke's, I don't know why that is, quite frankly, because Duke's does have a kitchen.
All right. Yeah, that's interesting, I wonder.
Oh, go ahead, or?
No, yeah, go ahead.
I, I think the goal in, at, at least the vision for the fourth ward is to really just foster some more business diversity. That, that's really the overall objective, is, is if there's an opportunity to bring in some business diversity, I think that's the vision. Um, you know, this is, for me, I, I'm just curious, and Chief, maybe you can answer this, Global Brew, back in September 16, 2019, they had intentions of adding a commercial kitchen, and I remember being in the audience at that meeting, I wasn't up here, and I, and I'm just curious, what, was that what, is that what started the, that type of license? Could you help me understand how they have a, a Class C with that whole situation?
House Pub predates all of the, the licenses I just mentioned, so they have, House Pub really had a popcorn machine, and they still do, and they, and they've had that for 15, 20 years. Uh, so that was kind of the impetus to go to a tavern license. Global did talk about doing a kitchen, and then obviously COVID took place, and really what prompted some of these C licenses to take off, I think, is we started getting some breweries in, in town, and granted, those are a different licensure, but none of our breweries, other than Alter, has a kitchen, and really the model with the breweries is people bring in either pop-up kitchens and have certain events where maybe, uh, they might, uh, co-mango with maybe, I'll say, G and MIA, for instance, will do a pop-up kitchen at one, at Pollyanna, all right? So, a lot of these breweries started doing pretty well with people bringing carryout in, deliveries taking place with Uber Eats and Grub, other things, and then the C licenses, so these, these two ownership groups I'm talking about, one has three C licenses and the other has two. They're smaller in size, they don't offer, you know, food per se, but people can bring food in like the breweries, and it's a concept that's been working. So, from a police perspective, we don't have a lot of issues with these licenses to speak of, quite frankly, because they're small, they don't attract large crowds, most of the ones that are in existence here, we have an older clientele that, when I say older, they're attracting, they're not attracting 20-somethings right out of college or the military where they're, you know, going out and socializing. We have the Lewis, for instance, clientele in the Lewis is in the 40s a lot of times, so we don't really have, um, complete services there, so, but that, that kind of answered your question.
Yeah, it, it does, and, and I, I don't think the intent is to, it, it's really just, it's not for breweries or BYOB or you go to the hair salon, it, it's, it's really to try and foster a, a more business diversity, uh, different things like, like the house of Charlemagne down there, or, or the soap shop, or really just, I, I know we're not going to be a Geneva, we're not structured the same way, and I'm realistic in that way, but just if there's opportunities, and I don't know how the, the brokers and, and our economic development team, how, what role they play in that, you know what I'm saying? So, um, it, it's just something to put out there, I don't know if there's other ways we can maybe achieve more business diversity, so maybe Derek or somebody can, can speak to that in the future.
Yeah, we can bring that discussion back for a, a different topic at a later date, and Derek can prepare a, a presentation on that, but I guess for purposes of this, this is a, a policy issue by city council, so if there is an interest in exploring it or not an interest in exploring, I guess we're just looking for that direction from staff on how to proceed.
Yeah, I was calling you to comment.
Yeah, I, I just want to state, I've, it's, you know, I get what we're trying to do, but I'm always in favor of letting the markets determine what we're doing, it doesn't sound like there's a problem that we're really addressing, and I think it's, it's cast in too wide of net. I think it's a, of, uh, you know, we'd always want business diversity, but I don't, I don't think that we're doing ourselves any good by, by limiting the market, not that I expect that there's going to be a pressure, but I'm not interested in going this direction.
Yes, Jamie?
Um, I, I just have a couple of, of things to say about it, so I think, first of all, it might be wiser of us to incentivize businesses rather than punish, punish property owners by not allowing them to have a, a specific business come in that might be interested because we can't force business to open a soap shop or a, you know, a retail business in that location. Um, but I'm, but I'm also concerned because we would want to be uniformly applying policy, we wouldn't want to be picking and choosing, um, and we have the ability to deny licenses as they come in, we have three opportunities actually, at liquor commission, then a committee, and then a council, so if we don't like something and we don't want to have it there, we have the ability to say no, and I think that's where we already have this. I don't know that an additional policy would be necessary, but that's just my, that's my take on that.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just, just as a, we're on the liquor commission, obviously.
Correct.
I, I get what you're saying, incentives, I 100% think incentives are, are important. I would say that incentives also kind of manipulate the free market as well, so, but that aside, I mean, when's the last time we said no to a liquor license? I mean, and I think after discussion with our, with the city attorney, it's more equitable to bake these types of policies into zoning rather than, you know, saying no, right? I mean, you, again, we're at the LLC, how do we deny a liquor license that's put together? There's no, there's nothing, you know, no criminal activity, they have their LLC in order, they have their backers, you know, all the same filters that we use at LLC, I mean, LCC, excuse me, um, I just think it's, it's, um, we set ourselves up for scrutiny that way more than if we were to make this a, again, I emphasize temporary, zoning, and we also, um, you know, zoning limits business now, anyway, I mean, there are some permitted uses downtown and some that are not, so, I mean.
The question I want to ask is, is it helpful if, um, because it sounds like you may have a mixed bag here, if there's a raise of hands of, if there's an interest by council, an appetite to bring this forward as a policy discussion at a committee? Is that helpful to you?
Yes.
Okay, so who is interested in bringing this forward to a committee discussion? And who is not? Yes, Steve, go ahead.
Everyone got a chance to speak, can I?
Oh, absolutely.
The, the, you know, I, I look at this from, from both sides. Me as a, as a business owner, I do, I appreciate free market, but then I also look at some of the discussions that we've had when we've have, when we've had opportunities to say, you know, charge higher rates for the, the first, for people to be able to lease property for the, you know, around First Street and those businesses, and the justification to not do that is to say, well, you know, because of construction, they had down year, COVID, because, you know, there's always reasons not to, to do that, so it's like, on the same, you know, level as that, it's like, you know, the operators that have been there that have been through multiple different things, the people that have been there, um, I'm definitely sensitive to that to say, you know, kind of let them get a year to kind of recoup, or two years to kind of recoup, you know, and just kind of be sensitive to that, that, that's what I'll add to that.
Steve, do you want to move forward with policy?
I would, I would like to look at what it would look like, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I see the hands one more time, sorry, it kind of like went down.
Yes, those that would like to bring that forward for policy discussion at a committee level. Thank you, thank you, Ron, and those that are not. Thank you.
So, that would be no with them.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
However, to the points that were brought up about incentives and about things like you're discussing, I think there is some validity for you to bring forward some ideas in the coming months about both of those topics.
I agree.
Like, how do we continue to incentivize businesses that have been here for a while and support them while also, you know, of course drawing attention to things we currently have, like grants, but what else could we explore to Jamie's point about encouraging other types, and Brian's point, of other types of businesses that would like to explore St. Charles? I think that's a benefit overall and a benefit to what our other communities are trying to compete with us to do as well.
Absolutely, we can bring that forward to a future committee meeting.
I guess, I guess I'm just kind of curious as to, are we, are we not doing that? Because, I, I'm not, it just sounds like.
We have things like the SOD programs, and we have other grants like that available for existing businesses.
Right.
It sounds like there may be a drive to push something a little bit above and beyond what we already have.
I just look at, like, and I understand there's a draw to the city, there are the places that are open, and then, I don't want to say what comes what comes, but kind of a little bit supposingly, but this is just to appoint the free market, and I understand what businesses, we want to be diverse, and I do get that, and I do get we got the reputation of being the quote-unquote bar town, I do get that as well, but I also think that in terms of the town, we're, we also do a wonderful job with arts and entertainment, and there's a lot of different variety for people, and I just, I, I don't, I feel like we're looking at like we're, we're not doing enough, when I don't, I haven't seen that yet, it's not like, I, I just haven't yet, so that's where I'm kind of looking at, like, I feel like I'm missing something that businesses are, I don't want to say are being rejected, but it's like, is it not being recruited well? I, I, I feel like there, there's some kind of disconnect there that I need a little bit more clarification on.
I think that based on your point, yes, I think we're doing a good job.
Okay. Okay.
However, there is some potentially maybe need for education up here, as well as, we have Derek, we, how long have you been here, Derek, now?
Two years.
Two years.
Right.
He's going to like to say less than a year. But, you know, why did the city council determine that that was a necessary position? So let's talk about what, let's have a conversation up here about what he is doing.
Well, and I'm not, and please, Derek, I'm not looking, I'm not judging anything like that, I'm not trying to go down that road, but I'm kind of looking at here like all of a sudden, here we are, and it's just like, well, we got to do this, this, that, and the other. It's like, well, haven't we been doing those things? And if we have been doing those things, and this is how the market's kind of playing out, then isn't this how the market's playing out? Or am I, I'm just looking like, I feel, am I missing something? And I'm not saying that to be naive or anything, but it's like, if this is, if we are doing what we're supposed to be doing, which I'm under the assumption we are, and then all of a sudden those businesses aren't coming, but here are the ones that want to be here and want to be invested? What am I missing?
I think there's probably an opportunity maybe for some education on the existing incentive programs that we have in place, so everybody has a good solid footing to understand what we currently do. And I think with that, we can probably offer some additional options for council if there's some increased desire to incentivize, whether it's existing businesses or diversification of businesses. So I think that can all be wrapped into one presentation, because there are probably a number of existing businesses that don't realize some of the things that we have available as a city, despite our best efforts to make them aware of that.
And to that point really quick, I know that Derek interacts with other directors.
Correct.
And so, in other communities, so it would be helpful if we know also what's happening, because we can say we're doing a great job, but what if?
And is this something the Business Alliance is also going to get better, maybe better connected with to help draw, if this is our goal to draw? I know everything is kind of newer and everything, but I'm just looking for a little, I guess, just a little bit more clarification.
Yeah, they're a little less responsible too for drawing the businesses, and that's really Derek's umbrella. They really market our existing businesses. So that's why it's a nice partnership with that. But I think a presentation, like I said, just educational about options as well as existing programs would be very helpful.
I think that's why it's kind of hard for me to be like, yeah, I support, or why I kind of voted, that's why I kind of voted no, because it's like, I feel like there needs to be more before we make that type of decision moving forward.
Jamie, well, and I would just say that, you know, I've seen a lot of the work that Derek has done in the larger, you know, the larger scope of the big things that he's tried to bring in, and I think that's probably taken up a lot of his efforts and time. And if we can have more strategic focus, I think, on council of what we want to see as far as maybe not a Whole Foods, that probably eats up a great deal of his time, that sort of thing, or the mall, or these, you know, these really big projects, maybe it will help focus those efforts a little differently. Because I would agree a hundred percent that we need those, and I think a lot of you have heard me say things like, you know, I like the boardwalk shop idea, it's those incubators, those things that get people in. Where to put something like that is a whole other topic for discussion, but, you know, changing the face of what people see as our retail scope down here is probably something that we want to talk about.
Paul, do you have a comment?
I have actually a question, because as we're talking about economic development, we have an economic, we have an incentive program that we put together six, five years ago, seven years ago. How often do we use that?
The funds get utilized for it every year.
Yeah.
The grants are limited to ten thousand dollars, and I get to sign that off without going to council.
Okay.
If it goes over twenty, then it's required to go to council, but I think we have the approach.
What was the max? It was something, because I remember when it was being put together, it was kind of, we were competing with Batavia and, you know, using some other local cities.
The total annual amount is fifty thousand dollars, so I can give out five grants for ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
But that is citywide, not just to the downtown.
Well, no, and I would think about that also, because I think Steve makes a really good point that I think is really hard at times, because one of the things that makes St. Charles a really great city is the businesses that we have here. And then as we attract more people in the town, they compete with the people that work here, it's a tough situation, you know? Every time we grow, you see casualties in our business community. I don't have great ideas about how to deal with that, but I mean, you see it time and time, you see it, you saw it so much through First Street, through big bridge construction, going back twenty years. It's a tricky question, but I've never seen anything like limiting, you know, a liquor license that would solve that. But I am interested in more presentations, as we're talking about from you, some guidance on your thoughts.
Yeah, I think it certainly warrants a conversation, and something that I could probably do pretty easily is at least some type of vacancy analysis.
Yeah.
I think, you know, my time management is very important, and if we have a downtown that is primarily full of businesses, then that's not where I should be directing my energy. It should be towards President Ron and the mall, and some of our other larger sites that would have a bigger impact on us as a community and financially. Something else that does come to mind, I know, you know, me and the mayor, Heather and the Business Alliance, this past year, we focused on reaching out to manufacturers in our community to kind of get a sense of them, of how things were going. I think that was very successful. You saw them here, I think it was last week, when they got their Main St. Charles award. Kind of want to focus that on industry. Maybe we could point out a couple of our downtown shops and maybe speak to them and talk about their experience in the downtown, and that maybe help us get a little bit more education on how to move forward.
Thank you. And, yes.
Really quick, because I'm, sorry, eyes are going in the back of heads here. So I always think that there's always opportunity for, I don't want to use the word improvement, because I think you're doing a fine job. I think we have great incentives, enhancement of incentives, particularly for our downtown district. I think you are focusing on the city as a whole, thank you. However, the jewel, of course, we, you know, again, we're as representatives of the central business district, that's on our minds quite a bit. I do like the idea of incentives. I think they're, they could be used as levers for encouragement of certain businesses and things like that. I mean, again, the focus, you know, anecdotally, I don't have like data right in front of me, but when I hear from, you know, owners and things, you know, I just need someone to pay rent, you know, someone in there to pay rent, and a bar goes in there, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, is it a rampant problem? I don't know. I mean, maybe that's where retention visits and data like that can be helpful to us, because it is anecdotal, but I cringe when I hear that type of feedback, because it's like, I think we can do better in downtown. I don't want, I'm not a stifler of free market economics, but I'm also, we're planners and we're policymakers, so let's pull some levers if necessary. That's really the spirit of this whole thing, so.
Okay. Next topic, and I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, because it may not be an issue any longer. There was a conversation in City Administrator, you'll talk more about this, about enhancing the ethics ordinance. And after that was brought up, the DA is over here, where Naperville decided, as an example, I did, because I was curious, I contacted the Naperville mayor to get insight on why or why not they had an expanded ethics ordinance. When I talked with him, and why, okay, this may not be, this may be a non-issue, is he did mention that in their ethics ordinance at the time, individuals up in the DA just had to cite if they had a campaign contribution of some sort, and that it was not going to impact their decision. But yes, they could still make the decision. So I just want clarification there, that there wasn't any one that was opting out of decision making. Also, after I had talked with him, he had said that there were some issues with it, that for lack of better words, enhancing their ethics ordinance did make, for things to go down a little bit of a dirtier road, where people were trying to exit the system, for lack of better terms as well, and just start making contributions out of PACs, or individuals in a family, or through other businesses that were not connected to their business. So having said that, and also after that, he was in the process, when I talked to him about bringing forward the repealing of that ordinance, and it has since been working. And I'll turn it over to you to give more detail.
Yeah, I think the conversation at this council centered around perhaps enhancing it, making it a little more restrictive than the state statute. That is what we are permitted to do. It has to be at least as restrictive as the state statute. Most municipalities do just adopt what the existing state statute is, and for those exact reasons. The reason I included a lot of information about Naperville in the packet that I presented is because they went through the same discussion, essentially trying to figure out a way to make it public if a council member had a particular relationship with the developer. But I think the two articles I included in the packet did a really nice job of outlining the concern with enhancing an ethics ordinance in that way, because as soon as you create a rule, somebody finds a way to find a loophole in it to circumvent it. So they have since repealed it. Now I will, in full disclosure, say both of those votes to both pass and repeal it were split votes by a single-person majority, or one more than the other side. So at this point, I think I'm looking for direction from city council on if there is any interest in enhancing our ethics ordinance or keeping it as is. And I think when we talked about this in the summer, somebody had brought up Geneva as well, thinking that they had something that was more restrictive. But we did look at Geneva's ordinance. It is the state statute, it's just delineated out in a table format in their ordinance, so they are doing exactly what the state statute does as well, which is what most municipalities do.
Okay.
Could I, the one thing that I wanted to talk about and consider, and it's, I'm not really sure if it's an ethics ordinance, more of a funding policy, and that is for nonprofits. So we as a city give money to some of the nonprofits, and there are certain restrictions on political campaigning via the IRS code for nonprofits. So I don't think we have any language, and maybe, maybe, Nick, you can speak to that, I don't think we have any language that addresses, for me personally, if we're going to give XYZ nonprofit ten thousand dollars, they should be aware that they are to comply with the IRS code for the 501(c)(3). In other words, I don't want to be subsidizing or being complicit with a nonprofit that decides to take that sort of funding, or any sort of resources, pictures, social media, whatever it may be, and they're out there campaigning for one candidate. I've seen it the last election, it was disturbing. So for me, it can be as simple as a paragraph in whatever we're giving out, say, hey, we accept this funding from the city of St. Charles, we will abide by the 501(c)(3), we will comply with the IRS code, and if not, I would like a clawback provision, because I'm not interested in subsidizing a nonprofit that's going to excessively lobby or campaign for a candidate. So that, for me, it's more of a funding policy, I think, than anything.
And I can address that component, I'll let Nick weigh in on anything he wants to add as well. I did speak to our ethics advisor, and he said there's really no way that we can restrict their participation, their endorsement, anything like that, as far as their candidate choices. You know, we can just not give those entities money, but he said as far as actually saying, we're going to give you money, and then tell you that because of that money, you can't actually restrict their choices. He said that's not a road that we could go down. I did ask him about the compliance with the tax code. His response was, no, the tax attorney, that's really a situation between that, 501(c)(3) and their own, and the IRS. Like, that's not a relationship that we're privy to and we can't get involved in. So, and Nick, I don't know if there's anything else that you want to add on to that.
Thanks, Heather. She asked me the same questions that you raised, and I referred her to the ethics attorney, but I gave her my opinion regardless, because that's what I do. And I came up to the same conclusion he did. It's really not an ethics ordinance issue. It may be a funding issue for you, that you as a council get to address when you get to that point, but it's not the ability of this council to regulate what the chamber, for example, can do or not do in terms of advocating for candidates, for example, which they're entitled to do. So that's really not an ethics issue. And secondly, I'm not a tax attorney also, but if they run afoul of their 501(c)(3), that's at their risk and the IRS, and then take whatever action they want to take against them. But it's really not something that's within our purview to extend against them. If you have issues with an entity, that's part of your discussion of whether you're going to fund them or not in the future.
So we could consider, if they have complaints against them or something like that, that can be taken into consideration?
Yes. I think this council is, or the city is a metric on how we fund these things, I think, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, not with the, not with certain entities, with the chamber, it's just a membership.
But, you know, if there's something that's up here for discussion at that time, then you'll have that discussion.
Also, basically, and because I work in the nonprofit sector, the money we give is designated for certain activity typically, and by law, they really shouldn't be using that money if they're audited for some other purpose. So if you wanted to go as far as in the funding agreement, say, we, this money is restricted to this program and cannot be used for lobbying efforts, or whatever you want to say, that happens often, and they are restricted to use the money, like all of the Visitors Cultural Commission money is specifically for a purpose.
But is that something that we could put in a policy?
In a funding agreement, we could. I don't.
Could we do it, I mean, I'm fine with something like that.
The funding agreement, it can be stated that the money has to be used for the restricted purpose and not for lobbying efforts.
And I just want to make sure that we're separating out, we have funding agreements with the Business Alliance and some of the other agencies that we fund, or like Visitors Cultural Commission, but some of the other things, like the chamber, for example, are membership-driven, so we either sponsor a specific event.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I got that. Yeah, but I like what you just suggested, and I'm fine with something like that, if we can just craft that language in whatever agreements are.
Because that's not a matter of, I mean, that's really ethics on their.
Yeah, it's a funding policy.
Our money is not being used for that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Basically, you restrict what that money's used for.
Correct.
If they violate that, what's the attorney Pepper's point? In the IRS code that I did go look up, if they use it for any lobbying or other activities, they can lose their 501(c)(3).
And in many cases.
If they get caught.
If they get caught, right.
Correct. So, just my.
And in many cases, organizations like those have their own role in place where they can, so, just to be fair. Anyone have anything regarding this on that side? Are we, are we comfortable with our current ethics ordinance?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, because I think, I was the one that kind of precipitated this. So just to be clear as to my understanding of this, and why I'm okay with sort of dropping the request on this, and just to put it in layman's terms for anyone else that had that same interest, my understanding is that if we were to put some sort of requirement around that if you have provided campaign contributions to one of us up here, that you have to come up to, when you come up to the DA to make comments or submit information, you have to disclose that you've done that, all that simply does is give you the opportunity to then funnel your donations through other means to, I guess, hide that, hide behind that disclosure, not have to give that disclosure. So your spouse could give that, your kids could give that, you could create a PAC to do that, and there really is no genuine way to ensure that you are being transparent. So creating an ordinance like this does not guarantee any kind of transparency. All it does is push things into sort of a quiet space, that it gives the illusion of transparency that doesn't really exist.
That a good? That's a good summary, and as a reminder, everybody that's receiving campaign donations is required to report to the state. So there is that layer of what I think that essence is, and what everybody's trying to get at already in place. It was really this, and maybe just for a quick summary for the minute, is that Naperville attempted to say that anybody who donated anything in excess of seven hundred and fifty dollars had to, the city council member had to disclose that before taking a vote on the issue. And the article sort of outlined a number of ways to bypass that, including what if somebody lobbied a council member that wasn't actually the applicant on a project, but they wanted you to vote a certain way, or a family member, or a really good example is union donations. They're not actually up there asking for anything specific as a person from the council, but then they can control a lot of those votes, but never actually have to disclose it. So it really wasn't getting at the root of what they were trying to attempt to solve. All those disclosures and statements are made via the State Board of Elections still.
Right, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are we all good here?
I am.
You have your mouth open.
No.
Okay. Just in my mouth, maybe it was a mignon or something, I don't know. Item number seven, I'll make a couple of comments, and I know that, so, without going down the whole road of all that's happened with the Army Corps Report and DNR and all these things we know and don't know, and some things that have gotten moneyed, the statement that I have been making, and that I've circulated to all of you, and we've all weighed in on, and we seem to be comfortable with, was that we didn't have enough information other than the Army Corps Environmental Report and Study to feel we're doing our due diligence and making a decision to remove a dam or not remove a dam without several other information pieces. Some of them to be recreational impact of removing or keeping a dam, economic impact, and it seems like we've all been comfortable with that statement. A lot has happened, and that precipitated a conversation, conversations that we've been having with the Park District and some of their board members, about what is the next step in determining, how can we find this information? How can we work together? Because the city may or may not eventually own the dam, and I know Director Searle's here to give us, he's going to give us the facts of what we know versus misinformation. Um, in addition to just being able to have that conversation about what the Park District's interests are as well, not just the city. So we want to make sure we're taking into account everyone's, um, economic and recreational impact on the river. So what came out of some of those conversations was, one, what you're going to be reacting to today is a task force. And City Administrator McGuire has put together a good beginning of what that might look like for your reaction. Um, my recommendation is to appoint Alderman Werbal, Alderman Lencioni, and Alderman Bongard to that commission, or to that task force to represent us, as well as she'll go into what the other representation will be. And then the other point we're going to talk about today, unless I'm missing anything, is Director Surr is going to come up and tell us some of the facts that may have been muddied over the course of the last couple of weeks. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. My head's getting.
All right. So Peter's walking up here. I did ask him to go over some of the items that staff met with, with the Army Corps and IDNR last week. So he's going to come up here and do a little bit of a rundown of that. But just really to clarify that high points, IDNR owns the dam right now. Army Corps is looking for their engagement right now in terms of any timeline. But IDNR does not want to do anything in terms of deciding to remove or not remove the dam without the, without the city's buy-in. And essentially, what we've learned from them is we have a little bit of time to work through that process. Staff did express their frustration with how this document was rolled out and our inclusion in the process that countered some of the items that they had told us in the last year and how they were going to approach this. So they have apologized for sort of throwing this out to the public without including us in this and approaching this a little bit more strategically. But we do have some time to work through this without everything just, without them telling us that make a decision now or we're going to make our own decision. Pete?
Heather, sorry, I got one quick question. I look at the members.
Yes.
Can you help me understand the River Corridor Foundation, why they're considered?
Yeah, I think it's important for them. And the mayor sat down with the Park District, Park Board President, as well as some staff members along with River Corridor. I think because of how actively they have been engaged in this process, it's really important to include them in this because there's a number of pieces of information, statements, plans that have been put out by them. And we're getting a lot of those questions from the city directly. I think that they need to be part of this, at least from a discussion point. But that's why there is only one representative on there, so they can weigh in on some of the information they've already put out or solicited or obtained over the last decade.
Anyone else before Director Surr?
Yes, right.
They've made their intentions pretty well known about what direction they think that we should go. So I'm just curious if you've got a task force that's trying to look at this objectively and for everything, how you're going to have one group saying, well, here's what we'd like to do.
Yeah. Can I just pause on your, on the answer to that until he goes through the questions or the facts that he has, and then we can start that. I think that's more discussion-based.
So I think most of the facts that I have in my notes here has already been talked about. Any questions? But maybe just to tee this up a little bit, uh, you know, we're talking about the Fox River Connectivity and Habitat Study. Uh, this is a three-section, 519 Illinois River Basin Restoration Project. It is from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Chicago District is really kind of the ones functioning this. And as we all know, it was released to the public here several months ago. This is a restart of an initial effort that they did in 2015. They actually went through this process at one point in time way back when it's been reactivated. Um, as somebody mentioned, staff did not have a copy of this in advance to it going out to the public. And, uh, they had their reasons for that, but weren't really specific. They said that's their process and that's, that's the decision that they made. Um, this is in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969. And as we've also mentioned, we all know that this was environmentally driven. Um, it didn't really pick up on any of the recreational, uh, things that we've talked about or other ideas like the Active River Project. Uh, they did identify safety in the report as well that you have all seen. And ultimately, the recommendation is to remove all dams from that perspective. Um, so we did meet on January 17th with the Army Corps and the IDNR representatives. So I'll just kind of give you their perspective, the latest information we have with them. The Army Corps, um, who is managing this report, is following the Section 519 grant process. It's a federal process. And they made it real clear that they're going to continue with that process. Uh, they released the study to the public. They did the study. They released it to the public. Uh, the public has had time to comment on that. And, um, that meeting phase, and they met with the public as well, as you know, in some open conversations. That phase is complete. So the agency review is now happening, and that'll happen for the next several months. And part of that will be to provide response from the public comment. Every question that was asked, they will answer in some sort of fashion. And that will be, is supposed to be coming out to the public very soon. The agency, one of the confusing things and some of the rumors that we've heard, and it's quite frankly true, the agency, the Army Corps, is asking and seeking for a non-binding letter of intent. And here's the thing, it's not a non-binding letter of intent from the city. It's, they're asking for a non-binding letter of intent from the dam owners. The dam owner in St. Charles is the IDNR. So the IDNR is responsible for providing that non-binding letter of intent. The city of St. Charles is not. And quite frankly, the IDNR has already provided that letter of intent, non-binding intent, to say basically, we are okay with you continuing this process that's non-binding. They are considering maybe making a modification to that or a second letter that emphasizes that again, but they're still determining that. Um, there was also a date thrown out there that this non-binding letter of intent was due this April. Um, we have found out from their staff that actually it's not quite needed until October, when they will go into this thing that's called a project partnership agreement, a PPA. And in essence, that really is where the road meets the rubber in regards to their process. That is the real commitment from a dam owner and, and commitment forward in removing the dam. Um, and they suggest that construction of the dams could start as early as 2026. Um, so we asked the IDNR, what is your intent? And how are you going to manage that expectation? Uh, they confirmed once again, several times over, that they are owners of the dam. Uh, they have confirmed that they will not remove the dam without public engagement. And they've said that to us several times. Um, they were honest, and they said that their biggest concern is liability. Um, safety and maintenance costs for that dam is what they're, they're looking at. But they want to work with us. And IDNR also has funding sources available for the dam removal, um, that are separate from what the Army Corps of Engineers have as a part of this Section 519 grant. So, um, in summary, I would just say that the IDNR, at least the staffers that we met with, appear to be more flexible in regards to the partnerships and/or exploring alternative options. They weren't necessarily saying that it's a, it's a removal or keep the dam. Uh, partial removal is certainly something they would like to explore. Uh, future ownership responsibilities is certainly something that's going to come up in the future. Um, and things like the Active River type solution, a hybrid type solution, is certainly something that they would also be interested in having further conversations about.
Thank you.
So that being said, the IDNR, their, their whole intent in this is to reduce their liability and keep the river in its best ecological state. So it is likely that they are going to want to remove this. And if the city does not want to remove it, they're not going to force it. But what will likely come on the heels of that is they will want us to take ownership of the dam. And that will be to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars of maintenance if you spread over major repairs and yearly maintenance that we would need. So, um, before we get to that point, though, I think it behooves us as a city to study all of these items to figure out, is there any economic development impact that we would lose by losing the dam or in the inverse gain from maintaining the dam? Active River is another big thing that I think we really need to consider. The recreation is an important component. The Park District does use this for a number of activities that they have on the river, which is why they're engaged in this process as well. I think that the number of pages contained in that report, it is not appropriate that we would be required to make a decision on this in such a short timeframe. And it's going to take experts in this field to weigh through some of those items. And we are going to need to engage the appropriate personnel and consultants to actually weigh through some of these items. So, uh, the staff's recommendation, after we consulted and talked with the mayor, was to work through this in a task form manner. We think it's appropriate to engage the public. There are people that are very emotionally driven on all sides of this argument, and I think all of them need to be heard before the city council is tasked with actually making a decision on this. So the idea behind this task force is that we would have five city council members, three elected officials, two residents, three Park District members, one elected official from their board, and two residents, and then one River Corridor Foundation member. And that task force would be asked to assess the environmental, economic development, and recreational impacts at minimum, as well as any other categories that they deem necessary and appropriate. We would ask them to engage the public, establishing at least a website and having some in-person forums with the public, and then report back to the city and Park District Board at least quarterly on the items that they found. And then we would be asking the Park District to split costs equally with us and any consultants that are engaged. We have met both with their executive director, as well as their Park Board President, on this already. They're aware that we are discussing this tonight. And then we would be requesting final reports by that task force no later than March 1st of 2025, which is just in advance of when this partnership, PPA, will be entered into by Army Corps and IDNR. Can you repeat your question, Alderson Bongard?
What meeting is this? Um, so I, like, I think that, and picking up where Mark had left off, it just seems to me that you have a group that has gone, you know, pretty public about their intentions, where they want to go, which, you know, I think there's a lot of people here that think it's a great idea. I just, I'm curious, with a task force that's going to really try and come at this objectively with a recommendation to this body and Park District, is, is that the right place to have a group that's come out so publicly? Just like if, if Brian comes out and says X, Y, Z about something like, whoa, like, I think the idea is we're coming with a very open mind about how this is going to impact this city. And I just, you know, regardless of where you might be with this issue.
So my thought on that is that the Park District and city can then sort of put them to task on some of the statements they've made and include that in the analysis. And there are a lot of dollars that have been thrown out that really haven't been pen to paper on engineering and design yet. And I think as part of all of these considerations, that's really important because maybe in theory, that sounds like a great idea until we need them to actually get to the design phase to weigh that as a serious option. So I think the only way to get there is to include them in that process and make sure that the right people are at the table to ask those tough questions.
I had a question. The headwaters for the Fox River is in Wisconsin.
Correct.
So we're talking about the IDNR. Has the Wisconsin version of IDNR, have they weighed in on any of this stuff?
Yeah, I don't think there are any, are there any dams up there? I can't remember. I looked at the study and now it's escaping me.
I don't know. I probably didn't tell them I focused.
Yeah.
Just because that's the source of the river. So I'm interested to see what, they're a part of this.
And those are other factors that really need to be addressed in that.
The only thing I can say in the task force is because they're looking for public engagement, they mentioned that a couple of times. Um, I do feel like there should be, I mean, we had a lot of input. We had a lot of people that sent in things for or against. Maybe there's a way that we can engage some of those people, maybe, or something to have some, other than elected people or people that work for the city, other people to have some, some say-so in this committee a little bit.
I was going to say, there are three resident spaces on the city council appointing, as well as two on the Park District.
Okay.
So there is room for that. The mayor will, will be appointing additional residents, as well as the Park District.
I just want some, very, you know, non-biased, very open.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Along with that question, though, too, I mean, uh, this would be a commission, but I mean, they'd be open meetings, closed meetings? I mean, there'd be opportunities for public forums.
Well, part of this resolution is that they engage the public actively in addition to a website where they can solicit feedback, having actual in-person forums. So even if, um, you know, there's five members present from the city residents, that they would still be opening meetings to further input from the residents as a whole.
Yes, right.
Uh, just some clarity. I just want, it sounds like we're going to have consultants, and we're going to be just doing research and getting feedback from, from the public and stakeholders. So I just want to make sure this is, this is going to be a collective decision up here. This is not, the task force is really just, just coming back and, and providing information. Here's our findings for all the research that we did in collaboration with the Park District, the River Corridor Foundation, the citizens. So I just, just so I'm aware of what our role is.
Yeah, publicly, I'll state that Section 6 of that resolution talks about cost sharing and any expenditures by that task force would have to be pre-approved by the city council.
Okay.
They become, they basically become consultants to the city council by divvying it up as a task force, correct?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, essentially. I mean, that's the role of the task force is to do that with us.
Correct. And with this particular issue, it's just very nuanced, even only looking at the environmental aspect and the Army Corps, this is what they're, they're doing day in and day out for us at a staff level to try to sort through that 225-page or whatever number of page report it was. There's a lot of really technical information in there. We really need to engage a consultant to say, this makes sense, this doesn't make sense, or here's where we could talk about maybe some different opinions on some of these issues that we don't have the technical skill set existing on staff to do.
So they're going to come back, they're really just going to come back with, it's all information-based. They're not going to come back and say, hey, the task force recommends this, correct?
Well, they're going to look at each of these three topics that we're asking, but essentially it's going to be providing the information, here's what would happen from this perspective.
Okay.
So do you need to answer to the layout of the task force?
Correct. As long as everybody is supportive of it in this format, then we would bring it to committee.
Draft that will go to committee for you all to react to that.
I'm fine with it.
It's fine.
Good.
Good, thank you.
There you go.
Okay, that was, um, okay. So the next topic is just what we, how we got to this point on many of the topics we talked about today were because of our open forum. So at this point, I know staff is looking for other topics that you'd like to see either brought back to this format and/or brought back to a committee for discussion. Ryan, apparently you have something.
So shame on me, because we spent about two and a half hours talking about things we were going to spend money on. And I was very quiet, thinking that we were going to talk more, and then we moved on. So we spent a lot of time talking about investment and infrastructure and debt and people and all of this. And I think our projected expenditure is $61 million that we're looking at for 2023, 2024. And I know this becomes difficult of how we talk about the things that we want to do in real time, when we're budgeting it, how we pay for it, what rates we want to look at. And it's been, you know, three hours. So I just, I'm really curious how we continue this conversation through Q1 into Q2, so that we are not walking into certain meetings where it's, well, you know, are we going to raise the rate on X? Or how is this going to work? And we, we find a way to work the problem a little bit, because I get it. If you look at two years ago and four years ago and six years ago, we all know our, our general expenditures are climbing. And I don't think that they're going to go down. But like this body talked about a lot, we have a very difficult time just turning the dial to try and meet that. At some point, we're going to have to have larger conversations about what we want to prioritize and what we can't. And not at 8:15 after three and a half hours of this, but also not kicking the can down to, it's Memorial Day, and oh, hey, by the way, we have to have this meeting. So where are we at with raising some rates? So I'm really curious with how we can continue this and keep climbing into it, because I just don't want to be in the same spot two years, four years from now, when we're like, well, all we can do is just keep turning the dial, because it's not sustainable.
And I'll just ask for a little clarification. Are you talking about in terms of our draft budget specifically for next fiscal year? So we will be having additional presentations on the specific numbers with the draft budget. And that's something, um, that last year was really the first draft budget this group has seen as a council. So that'll be coming forward in multiple committee meetings in smaller chunks. We can talk about operations. We can talk about water, talk about tour, talk about electric, each individually, in terms of how those capital projects that we've gotten direction from council on tonight for the big picture things fit into those items.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at this, you know, distinguished table, um, you have every single person's asking for more because they're justifying what they have to do to maintain service levels and do that. You've got this group up here that wants to do our best to meet that. But there's a group in the middle that realistically, we have to be aware of at some point, I'm not sure. So how do you prioritize who comes where? And we spent a lot of time talking about all the things we want to buy and pay for. I just want to make sure that we don't wake up, you know, two months from now in a spot where, well, we've kind of committed this, we talked about it, like getting more into the weeds.
Sure. So we'll take the directives from council tonight in terms of the things that we talked about in terms of big project, things that need to be done, and try to work those into the budget without raising rates, without, without doing those kind of things to fit it within our existing balanced revenues and expenditures. So that's always the first step, is at a staff level, we think, what can we do to make all of this fit together as a puzzle, um, without asking for additional revenue sources. So that's always our first step, too, to tackle that, just because, again, these are our day-to-day jobs. This is what we're immersed in before we bring that to council. So certainly, those discussions will be ongoing. I understand your, your point. It's completely valid. And, um, we'll continue to work that dialogue and continue bringing those informational pieces to council.
I see your hand up. I'm sorry. Just to supplement what Ryan's saying. So I think one specific tactic, and Bill, I know you and I have talked about this, and we talked about it in committee too, is it possible to get, whether it's monthly or quarterly, a, you know how we discuss like savings, like this spurred, this discussion spurred was spurred by the fact that we had, what, $200,000 savings? We used that to fix up the firehouses? We used that to fix up the firehouses, you know, and we had further discussions about like, how, you know, which was great, I was pleased to see that. Can we track that? I know they come up on occasion. I think that might be a tactic that we, if that's what you're talking about, Ryan, like, just have a throttle, understand where we're kind of ahead, or we might be behind, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we've had conversations, like, it's really hard in real time to capture some of that data and make the decision-making. I think I'm more interested in, again, all the things that we need to pay for, you know, that are mandated, not mandated, and we get into different things, like, you know, we're not touching the property tax levy because we got to, we got to be careful here because we can't do two things at the same time. Every single year, our expenses are growing. So if we don't want to raise rates and you don't want to do X, how are you going to pay for it? Or what do you want to pay for, to what level? And I think we're all, you know, in the same boat of trying to protect that. So whatever the mechanism is, if it's getting a rapport, having more of those, like, I'm in favor.
A hundred percent, and I agree with you on that. I still would like to see, like, more like, and I think Paul even made comments about this too, where you kind, we have like more real-time-ish, I know it's not real-time, but like, more real-time-ish types of information that we can make decisions.
Sure. You know, let us regroup and kind of come up with some ideas about what that dialogue looks like. You're talking about variances. Obviously, we had a situation where we had some significant budget savings in one project, so if we were able to shift and get some things done in the capital planning process that we're a year or two out.
Right.
Right. As far as ongoing variances, you know, we do try and provide some of that summary information with the monthly treasures and finance reports. I know there's other information out there as well that people can access, so let's, give us a chance to kind of have some dialogue and see what that might look like going forward, sort of a periodic check-in in terms of where we're at with budget variances and different things. A lot of it is really typical because, you know, some projects don't start till halfway through the year. Sometimes, you know, recycling cash flows are, you know, just hard to get a read on what's happened just over one month or two months. But let us give a chance to have some dialogue on it and leave it there.
I will note is that some of these discussions help us as a staff to say, we hear you on the tax levy, we hear you on the reserves, we hear you on the percentages. So that allows us to make recommendations that are based on that feedback to comply with some of those items, so that by the time it gets to you, we're saying, okay, we're going to recommend a strategic drawdown here to fund a capital project, so that we're reducing our fund balance and still able to keep the service levels at what they are for a single year. So that's how some of that gets implemented, and then it's not always with the pomp and circumstance of having a very long dialogue about how to cut some of those things.
And you're, oh, sorry, I was going to say, you're doing that with your, that recommendation in our packet of the 2%.
Two things. One is for a future workshop. The strategic plan, when we had community engagement throughout our community, we talked about balanced and thoughtful development. So I would like to have a conversation about our zoning for building heights along the river, future workshop. And then the second thing is for the budget. I know we're going to talk about it again next month, but are we considering any funding for the parking study recommendations? Is that something we're taking into consideration?
Derek? Yeah, the study does include some costs associated with some of those solutions. So we have the ongoing survey right now, and I think based off of that and based off of staff's thoughts on it, we'll be able to budget some funds and go towards some of those.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else over there? And then something has to be your last time to say that. You can continually send these things to staff as well. And Ron, I'm sorry, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Is spring cleanup included in this budget?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, spring cleanup.
Spring cleanup.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything down here, Jamie?
I just want to say that it's, the one challenge I think I have, and I can't speak for some of our newer council, but it's difficult sometimes because the strategic plan gets created and approved, and then a new council gets elected, or there's an election, I should say, and new people come on board. So we are now making decisions based on something that we don't necessarily have the opportunity to weigh in on whether we approve it or not. So that does pose some challenges to us, because now we are tasked with funding something we don't necessarily have full buy-in to or wouldn't have necessarily pushed forward as something in our own strategic vision. So I, that's just a general statement.
And to specifically answer that question, we actually had that conversation at a staff level the other day about doing an update at least every two years to the strategic plan for that exact reason.
And maybe not around an election, something that includes people at a time when they're actually going to be implementing.
Just after an election cycle is the appropriate time to do that. So we're a year into this one, so, you know, next year would be, summer would be the appropriate time to revisit that.
Just a quick question to follow up on that. How often do we do this strategic plan? Ten years roughly?
I was just going to say, five, eight years is probably what you want to stick with. I think 10 years is pushing it, but I think at least doing some sort of revision to it every couple of years to check in and see where progress is, is appropriate.
Got it, thank you.
Just thank you guys for everything you're doing. We appreciate it, and we know this is a lot of time and energy, and answering all of our questions, very transparent. Thank you.
Is there any public comments this evening? Okay, a couple things to Mark's point, yes, thank you for putting, as well as you all up here, thank you for putting the time and effort, and as well as Nancy and Attorney Pepper, thank you too, and staff, thank you.